All right. Excuse me. Excuse me, we're gonna, we're gonna get started now. I know that there are a number of people still waiting to come inside. So as they sign in, if you could please quietly find a chair, we'd appreciate it. So good evening and welcome to the Thursday, December 1st, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board. Our first order of business is to review minutes. We have minutes here from October 6, 2022, and Mr. Rao will be recusing himself from that. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the minutes of October 6?
I have none.
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 Neither. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we entertain the October 6, 2022 minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item of business is to review and sign bills. I'm told we have no bills for this month. Next item of business of board member comments. Mr. Rao, any comments this month?
No comments this month.
Mr. Jerry?
I have no comments.
Mr. Rotalakis?
No comments this month.
Mr. Thomas?
I would like to say happy birthday to our biggest fan who watches every month.
Very good, happy birthday. Ms. O'Neil, do you have any comments? Okay, and I have no comments either. Our first item of business is a new public hearing for 34 to 36 Harrington Avenue's site plan modification. Location is 34 to 36 Harrington Ave. Mr. Thomas, please read this legal notice.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, which actually has been changed to the Shrewsbury High School, at, uh, to hear the application of Harrington Avenue 34 LLC, 37 West Milbury Road, Sutton, Mass., 01590. By site plan modification by the Planning Board for property located at 34-36 Harrington Avenues are required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3, to allow for the modification of building setbacks based on as-built locations. Building number 36 side yard setback reduced from three feet to 2.9 feet, and building number 34 side yard setback increase from two feet to 4.2, west end from 10.9 to 12.9 to the south. Building number 34 footprint is smaller with no impact on parking. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled Site Development Plan for 34 through 36 Harrington Avenue on one-page sheet dated September 15th, 2022, prepared by J.M. Granier Associates Incorporated, 118 Turnpike Road, South Row, Mass., 01772, stamped by John M. Granier, P.E. Subject property on the westerly side of Harrington Avenue and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 32, Plot 105000. Copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/materials.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Granier, please introduce yourself.
Chairman, for the record, John Granier, J.A. Granier Associates. As, as Jay stated in the, uh, the application, what we are before you for is, um, I understand that we're required to have a modification to the site plan. What I have displayed, and I think you have reduced copies in, I think, in your packages, is, um, the site plan of the layout of what was approved, and what we submitted for your review is an overlay of the two buildings. To the north is the small retail building, uh, which, as Jay stated, the, in this zone, let me back up. The required yard setbacks are zero yard setbacks. So, um, there are no zoning issues. The, um, proposed setback to the sideline to the north was three feet, and the as-built location of that, um, was a difference of .1 feet. So, an inch, and a quarter, maybe, um, to the north. So we're a tenth of a foot closer to the northerly property line. And for the multifamily building, the, um, the setback, what they did was they held the line of the building that's closest to the parking lot, and the way that the, the, the frame ended up being designed structurally, it ended up being, uh, two feet narrower, shallower. So what that did was that increased the setback from, uh, what's shown as Johnson Street from, it was proposed at two feet, now we're at 4.2 feet. And on the southerly side, it was proposed at, uh, at, at 10.9, and then it's, so it's 12.9. So we've got two feet further away from the property lines. Other than that, it's within pretty much the same footprint. Obviously, no change to any parking layouts, grading, um, anything. So, um, that's the long and the short of it. So if anybody has any questions or comments, we'd love to address them.
Sure. Mr. Rao, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, just to confirm, only one setback kind of decreased a little bit, but in the other setbacks got better, much better.
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. No comments.
Mr. Jerry?
So just to be clear, it wasn't offset somewhere, the building is actually smaller now?
Correct.
Well, so.
Mr. Rotalakis?
Units in the building?
No, it's just, I, um, no, the unit, maybe the, the footprints, like the interior square footage, obviously made any change a little bit, but it didn't change anything else.
No questions. Uh, just one question I have is, I, I noticed that this was on the agenda, and, um, I was in the neighborhood recently, and I noticed that there was construction still ongoing prior to this being approved. Is that normal practice?
Um, I, before approval from who, your board?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I think that they were getting some of the demo, um, stuff for the building.
But one of the walls is framed, is, no?
I went by to the, yeah.
Oh, they had, I mean, the foundations were in, and they're, you know, they were actively working on, I, I don't know that they were working on any, when I went by it the last time, it was, it's been quiet since.
Well, I know the framing packages were dropped off.
Okay.
A week or so ago, and then it looks like they're, it looks like some, I'm just asking if that's generally, what, what, because that's, that's not something that I would be much, very much in favor of, just to make sure it's clear.
Okay. I'll relay that.
Thank you. Um, this is, is there any other questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Let's see, non-intertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you very much.
I move that we close the public hearing on the 34 through 36 area, did have a site plan modification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before us, we have a draft decision regarding this. Is there any questions or comments relative to the decision? It's pretty straightforward, it's, no surprises.
No.
Yes.
There is a typo, um, and one of the contact information, it says, it still says B.K. Hill at Shrewsbury MA on the first page, so, um, right there.
Oh, yep. Oh. So maybe we can make a motion to include changing the email notification, modification. Can we do that?
And there is, okay.
It's just a header, it's fine, you don't have to put it on. We just wanted to note it for you, do you have another typo?
One more, it says, um, that the final plan should include reference to any Board of Appeals variance, which I don't think they had, I think that was just, there's a special permit.
Right.
So that would be.
Change to a special permit.
Correct.
And no ZB.
Correct.
What page are you on now?
That's three.
At the bottom.
Okay.
I'll correct that, I apologize.
So small, uh, rookie, uh, location update to remove Board of Appeals variance and point special permit.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval, 34 through 36 Harrington Avenue, Harrington Avenue 34 LLC. As written, with, uh, the only exception that page three is gonna be, uh, the last paragraph of page three is gonna be swapped out to remove the reference to the zoning Board of Appeals and variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is a new public hearing for 1 to 7 Maple Avenue, Beal Commons, Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Shrewsbury Haskell MM LLC. Location is 1 to 7 Maple Avenue. Mr. Thomas, please read the public notice.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Shrewsbury Public High School, uh, to hear the application of Shrewsbury Haskell MM LLC, 40 Jackson Street, Suite 3200, Worcester, Mass., 01608. The site plan approval, a special permit for a mixed-use development containing 55 apartments and approximately 8,000 square feet of retail, special permits for front and side setbacks greater than 10 feet, and a special permit for parking within the side setback. It was required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7F3, and Section 6 Table 1, Section 7U4, and Section 7U6B. As shown on plans entitled Proposed Site Plan Documents in 13 Sheets dated October 28, 2022, prepared by Bowler Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road, South Row, Mass., 01772, stamped by John A. Kuchik, P.E. The subject property is located at 1 through 7 Maple Avenue and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 22, Plot 158000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Planning, in the Department of Planning and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website at https://shrewsburyma.gov/905-meeting-materials.
Thank you. The others, please introduce yourselves.
I'm Taylor Bearden, partner at Civicco Development.
Joe Stromer, Principal of JTA, Joe the Architect.
Eric DeGruel, Bowler Engineering.
Thank you. What do you got for us today?
Thank you.
So thank you all for having us tonight. As we just stated, so I am Taylor Bearden, and I'll be presenting the majority of this, and I'll hand off to Joe Stromer, who will hand off to Eric DeGruel. We have a number of other members of our team tonight who will be here for questions as needed. So to go through a quick agenda, we've been asked by staff to, uh, actually, quick question. Can you see the presentation?
No.
All right.
We'll, we'll go back.
Fair enough.
We got, we got a lot of the materials we're in front of us.
Okay, fair enough. So, uh, just as a quick, quick overview of what we'll be going through tonight, staff has asked us, since this is the first time we're presenting to the board, to give a little bit of a background and overview of how we got here, what our approach has been, and then we'll segue into the technical component. We'll go through introductions, process to date, town center benefits, site plan and architecture, and then next steps before handing it back to the chair for questions. So my name again is Taylor Bearden, I'm here with Andrew Consigli, uh, who's in the audience, and Alex Zakirsky and Brady Bankston, our co-developer at Greenlee Development. In terms of our, our team and our partnership, Civicco was founded seven years ago on the principles of smart growth and new urbanism. We generally work in, uh, town centers in New England that have that very traditional New England town center feel. We are working in a number of cities and towns right now, uh, Cambridge, Lincoln, Maynard, Newton, Reading, Sherborne, Worcester, uh, and Winchester, in addition to the town of Shrewsbury. We are joined by Greenlee Development, uh, shares our value as a co-developer, and, uh, we've been working on this together since the RFP process that began, uh, around this time last year. Some members of our team who are not able to make it tonight is Ryan Associates, a landscape architect, but in future meetings, we can bring them here for the presentation. So at a glance, I'll review the basics of this project. As we've presented to the board and the material you have in front of you, we have 55 one- and two-bedroom apartments, of which seven are income restricted at or below 80% of area median income. That represents the 12.5% as required by the base zoning. We are, uh, we have 7,700 square feet of ground floor retail facing Maple Ave that will include a variety of businesses. The business mix has not yet been decided, and we're anticipating that we will have between three and four businesses in that space, and the intention is that we'll try to activate the space for the full spectrum of a day. So if we, uh, just to give a quick example, it would be likely to include a cafe and a full-service restaurant, perhaps a specialty market, as opposed to, say, three full-service restaurants that might only serve lunch or dinner. We have a .7-acre public park on Wesleyan Street, that you can see on the Wesleyan Street frontage, and that will be deeded back to the town, uh, for town ownership at the completion of the project per the terms of the land disposition agreement to which we have agreed. We have 126 parking spaces that are allocated between residential and commercial tenants. In addition, there are 20 public parking spaces for general town center use that are fronting on that Wesleyan Street parcel, and an additional 10 that we have contemplated locating on Haskell Street, which there will be an easement, but those are effectively on-street public parking spaces without a restriction. And lastly, uh, per the terms of the RFP and also the land disposition agreement, we are preserving the Veterans Memorial facing Maple Ave. So how we got here, uh, we had a very kind of similar meeting where we presented to the Board of Selectmen that provided us the basic guardrails for this project, and so what we've done is we've taken these guardrails that were provided to us and approved by the Select Board and refined them to what you have seen now. There's been a number of changes, uh, just, I wanted you to be aware of where we began and where we've ended up in terms of the overall programming, some changes to parking, but generally, uh, the plans as approved by the Select Board in terms of programming are identical to what you're seeing here. We began this process, uh, in earnest, um, in the spring of 2022, where we executed a land disposition agreement with the town that was, uh, approved and executed by the Select Board. Uh, we have, in terms of meetings to date with staff and other boards, we submitted a preliminary set of plans that defined the overall parameters of what we were going to, uh, present to you here. We completed some survey and consulting team kickoff work in, in late summer and had a pre-submitment meeting with town staff in September. The most recent meeting we had was a neighborhood outreach meeting where we, uh, presented to a group of about 45 individuals at the, uh, Shrewsbury Public Library, and that was in, uh, the first, second week of November, in anticipation of this hearing. So we basically presented the contents of the package that we submitted to you all on November 1st and asked that if there are questions that were not answered at that time, that, uh, interested members come to this meeting to ask through the board. And that brings us to current, um, but this history obviously begins, uh, a long time ago for the town of Shrewsbury, and, uh, we wanted to bring out a couple of points here because most of the proposal that we have shared with you is, uh, based on guidance that begins kind of broadly with the master plan and, uh, more specifically with the town center visioning report, and then culminating with the rezoning, which ultimately provides those, uh, specific guidelines to which we're responding with our proposal. Generally, the takeaway from the master plan as it relates to town center district is that we are promoting the town center as a pedestrian-friendly shopping and service area, and this project specifically does that, uh, by introducing a mix of residential and retail and also bringing town center parking, which kind of, uh, addresses the dual mandate in the, uh, the town center planning of both creating a pedestrian destination but also addressing the town center parking needs. The goals of the rezoning specifically, uh, and the things that we think we've addressed here are to promote quality design in the traditional New England architectural style, which is codified in the, uh, Town Center Design Guidelines, while activating the street with pedestrian-friendly destinations and generally lowering barriers in field development, which is being accomplished by obviously taking what is, uh, a fairly significant parcel in the town center district, uh, which may actually be the largest parcel in the town center zoning district, um, and creating a mixed-use destination building. So as you can see here, uh, the 1 through 7 Maple Ave parcel is located near to the center of the geographic center of the town center, uh, district. That coincides generally with what is a 10-minute walk radius and a one-half mile radius around that 1 through 7 Maple Ave site. So the point of showing this here is that generally we're creating a mixed-use destination where residents will be able to patronize as pedestrians other town center businesses, but also anyone who's leveraging the resources of the site as a visitor, either a attendee to a, an area restaurant or business, or also, um, using the town center parking, have a 10-minute walk radius access to the majority of the town center, which coincides with that town center zoning district. So what we're looking at here in terms of why we think what we've presented here meets the overall intent of the rezoning and, uh, generally as, as communicated in the master plan, I'll run through a couple of points here. Generally, the three categories I'd like to discuss are place-making as it supports local business. So what we're doing here is bringing 7,700 square feet of retail, and like I said, we haven't established exactly what that retail mix is, but the intent is that, uh, we as, as the property developer and long-term owner of this site are gonna be looking at businesses that are synergistic together. So how can we bring some, uh, a mix of, of businesses that are compatible, um, together, and also that would be desirable for the residents in the building that will ultimately be renting this, this space and calling it home? That street-level retail contributes to that critical mass that creates a, a sense of place and shared well-being in the town center. And in order to create that in, at the, at the district at large, we need a variety of activities, a variety of uses, and, um, we're introducing 55 residential units as well as the retail to this area that previously did not have business or residential use. Housing creates, uh, foot traffic not only for the businesses in the, uh, building that we're proposing, but also for area businesses, um, so more new residents, increased demand for other town center goods and services. And foot traffic, as well as the, uh, addition of, of town center parking, is, is good for other business uses that may have, uh, limited parking. Lastly, we have proposed again, um, 20 off-street parking spaces that are unrestricted for public use. So just for purposes of discussion in a moment when we talk about our parking approach, those 20 off-street parking spaces that are in the parking lot are not included in our calculations, nor are the 10 public spaces that are going to be proposed on Haskell Street. So I'd like to just explain quickly our approach to, uh, shared parking, and, uh, in the Q and A portion of this, we have our, uh, traffic engineer, uh, Maureen, who is here and able to communicate, uh, the methodology for how the traffic, uh, study was completed. But I wanted to explain just generally for the benefit of the board and the public how we're approaching shared parking. So what we have is a proposal for 146 total spaces, of which, uh, 20 of those are allocated to public use. So that leaves a total of, of 83 spaces, uh, that are, uh, allocated for residential and, um, 43 for commercial. And I say that because the land disposition agreement that we have with the town of Shrewsbury gives a cap of 1.5 parking spaces per residential unit. So what you see here in the graph on the right is, uh, the leftmost column is as if we created four individual parking spaces based on the projected uses, residential, uh, commercial A, restaurant, commercial B, cafe, commercial C, boutique, retail. And just basing the, uh, calculation on the rest of the town of Shrewsbury's requirements for parking, if we had to build all those uses, we would essentially be building four separate parking spots, even though there's gonna be a natural, uh, variation in use throughout the day and use intensity of the land use. So what we found in our, in our assessment here is if you look at the distribution throughout the course of 9:00 AM, 1:00 PM, 6:00 PM, and 11:00 PM, we see that by looking at the actual expected use of the spaces throughout the day, uh, if we had to create at the full requirement of the rest of the town center or the rest of, uh, Shrewsbury's zoning requirements for parking, we would be overbuilt in terms of parking. Those gray bars represent unused spaces during the day. So what we're seeing generally is that peak residential utilization is late at night after commercial spaces are closed, and the highest demand, commercial tenant, would be a full-service restaurant, which puts peak demand around dinnertime. So we, uh, assert here that there's ample parking for a restaurant as many of those residents would be out around that hour. And, uh, the general efficiency we're looking at, um, is where we're coming from in terms of justification for, uh, why we're proposing the number of spaces that we are. So again, this is just a visual, uh, interpretation of this. The reason that we didn't put specific numbers to this calculation is because we don't know exactly what that retail mix is gonna be. This assessment here, assuming that we want a restaurant, cafe, and boutique retail, is our best guess at the moment, based on feedback we've received from interested, uh, vendors in the community, and also what we think makes a cohesive mix about what uses will be in that 7,700 square feet. So again, we can talk through this further, and, uh, you know, depending on the, the wish of the board, we can come back with more specific or concrete analyses. But the point that I wanted to make in particular was just that since we don't know specifically what those uses are going to be, and those uses will change over the course of the lifetime of this building, that we can't specifically say, uh, with certainty what, uh, what the exact, uh, expected parking allocation is going to be for a business that hasn't yet signed a lease for the space. So I'll give, uh, the microphone over to you, Joe, and Eric, um, and then hand it back to me.
Awesome. Thank you, Taylor. Again, my name is Joe Stromer, I'm Principal of JTA, Joe the Architect. Pleasure to be here with you today. So I'll cover the highlights of the architectural design and how it's been developed to date. So first, the overall building organization, so the big-picture thinking. The building works to address the needs of the town's master plan while adhering to the zoning bylaws for dimensional and design considerations and working to be considerate of the existing built infrastructure and connections to the neighborhood. The building provides 55 units, um, in a mix of one-bedroom, one-bedroom plus, two-bedrooms, and two-bedroom plus, um, with the goal of creating, uh, units to attract a multi-generational resident group. There's also 7,700 square feet of commercial space on the ground level, and this commercial space has been located in the northern corner of the building to connect closely to the rest of the town center commercial district. The front facades of the building are parallel to Maple Ave and Haskell Street with the parking located in the rear. The main residential entry to the building is located along Maple Ave facade to promote resident pedestrian engagement with the town center and a rear entry, uh, for use from residents, uh, coming in off the parking lot. The main commercial entries are also located along the Maple Ave facade, and there's space allocated for patios in front of commercial units to create an activated streetscape and again, engage in a pedestrian-focused experience. The design is careful to preserve and make the World War I Veterans Memorial a centerpiece to the neighborhood and the pedestrian journey connecting the development to the town center. Now, to create the much-needed residential units and new commercial space, there's of course, uh, a large building that's needed. The overall building design works to break the facade into smaller building components that allow for a variety of roof heights, types, and different articulations that reflect traditional New England architecture and the language of the commercial feel on Maple Ave and the residential feel, uh, on Haskell Street. These smaller building components work, uh, to visually break the scale of the building into smaller elements. The height of the building is also stepped down at the corner of Maple Ave and Haskell to bring the building to a smaller scale along the residential neighborhood on Haskell Street and work the grade. The building materials are also consistent and compatible with traditional New England design and construction. Brick, stone, and paneling are used on the building's base to designate the commercial level of the project, while the residential portions of the building incorporate brick, high-quality cement fiber battening, and clavbered siding to preserve the traditional aesthetic of the district. The building colors are a mixture of earth tones and neutral colors with gutters and downspout colors that complement the facade. downsput colors that complement the facade. All window fenestrations in the upper levels are designed with a one-to-two ratio on single windows and in both double and triple-window configurations. The diversity of window mullion patterns throughout the building again reflects the New England aesthetic. In accordance with the town bylaw, the roof is designed to keep all mechanical units and solar panels out of view and is an architectural asphalt shingle. Overall, the result of all these considerations is a building that both creates the opportunity for needed residential units and an expanded commercial district while using the language of the New England typology to help settle it into the surrounding neighborhood. With that, I'll pass it off to Eric to talk about this.
Thank you very much. Again, Eric DeBrul with Board Engineering, Site Civil. I'll just provide an area just to kind of orient everyone to the site and see some existing conditions before we talk a little bit about the proposed site. Property again is bounded by Maple Ave on a plan left, Haskell Street along the bottom, and then Wesleyan Street to the plan right, if you will. It's a three-and-a-half acre parcel with point seven acres being deeded back to the town, and that's that section to the right where the ball field is. Currently, the site contains the childcare center, associated parking, playground in that ball field. There's a fair amount of topography throughout the site, which Joe kind of hinted towards how the building needs to be articulated and really kind of planned through. Top of the Maple Ave is about thirty feet higher than the lowest point on Wesleyan, about twenty feet higher than the lowest point of, along Haskell Street. So we've got about twenty feet that we're working with throughout the property. If we could flip to the next one. So proposed plan, obviously see the V-shaped building running Maple Avenue and Haskell. Again, it's a seventy-seven hundred square feet of commercial with the fifty-five residential spread throughout. Public access, you know, pedestrian access is available through the sidewalks along Maple, all the way around Haskell Street, with plenty of pedestrian connectivity to the tenant spaces along Maple Street. Also, I'd like to point out what Joe was mentioning with the War Memorial as a kind of focal point to that commercial area along Maple Ave. There is one-site driveway along Haskell at the lower end of Haskell, and there is also a fire lane, the norally part of the site on Maple, which is requested by the town. Taylor was mentioning the parking breakdown, one hundred and forty-six parking spaces, the twenty reserved for public use, and then ten public spaces along Haskell Street where there was previously a bus pull-off for that school. Relative to some of the topography and the stormwater, the current site is currently sheet flows to some catch basins, which then gets piped out to Haskell Street and then further downstream towards Wesleyan. Under proposed conditions, we're going to do something similar, but we're going to make sure we capture all of the runoff through deep-sunk, pretty catch basins. Majority of that will be piped to an underground infiltration system, and then any overflow will then go back to the municipal system. Would be compliant with all local and state regulations and in many cases exceeding the requirements and actually reducing peak stormwater runoff that are going back to the municipal system. So that's certainly be a benefit for the municipal stormwater system in the neighborhood. Utilities, new water sewer service connections will go back out to Haskell Street, and new electric and gas services will come from Maple Ave. Relative to site lighting, we've got various light, lighting throughout the site, but effectively mounting heights at eighteen feet or lower, LED light-lot fixtures. There were some peer review and staff comments that we're going to continue to work through. So this, the lighting plan that we did submit will be further refined as we work with staff in a peer review letter on that as well. So that's really the high-level overview of the site. Certainly can get into any technical details with the Q and A. We'll turn it back to Taylor for next steps.
What we're looking at and what we have asked the board to review are site plan approval as well as a number of special permits. We're not seeking any dimensional variances, although there are a number of dimension-related items required in special permits listed here. So we're seeking a special permit for mixed-use development, specifically a vertical mix that includes nine or more residential units. Special permit for height over thirty-five but less than forty feet, front yard setback greater than ten feet, side yard setback greater than ten feet, and then parking at the side of the building. I'll just mention two things relative to the front yard and side yard setbacks, that the front yard setback in particular was driven by the need to preserve the World War I Memorial. And in particular, we did notice in the staff comments about the walkway width on the, on the curb on Maple Ave, that the current proposal contemplated trying to match the distance between the curb and the, and the memorial. So we have a number of options we can look at, but we did hear that comment, and among other comments, we'll, we'll come back, both on the grades engineering and the staff comments. We anticipate providing some additional feedback there. From just framing a couple of items for next, next steps here, we do have consultants again for architecture, engineering, and traffic on hand to address any technical questions. Our goal here is recognizing, we'll be in front of the board again, that if we can determine what information may be helpful at this session, that would greatly improve our ability to deliver that information next time to you all. And again, we have received the planning department comments as well as the grades engineering peer review. So with that, I turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Please have one matter of administrative that we'd like to discuss.
Sure.
The applicant had submitted in a letter through their attorney related to the special permit threshold. So generally, when this board reviews a special permit, it's a four-fifth supermajority vote. With the housing choice legislation that the state passed a year and a half ago, it is their interpretation that this project meets the downtown special permit criteria that would allow for a simple majority vote, so three votes rather than four. We did receive a letter from town council. We apologize, we didn't get that to you in advance. He does agree that this project would meet the criteria for a two-thirds vote. So before you begin any questioning or deliberation, he would like your board to vote that you're in agreement with that and that you would be looking for a two-thirds vote rather than a four-fifths vote on any special permit.
Thank you. What's up? Okay. Right. So based on what Ms. Last just said, is there any questions or comments relative to the request to have it go from a supermajority to a simple majority for the decision on the special permits? Any question?
I guess my, my only issue would be, and we're going to vote on that, we're going to sign a decision, and we're going to file it with the town clerk. So that, that becomes, or that becomes final?
No, no, no. You would just vote as you're opening the hearing that you wouldn't sign anything related to that.
This is just us acknowledging...
It's acknowledging that it's a two-thirds vote rather than a four-fifths vote.
Can I just clarify that? Because you said two-thirds vote, but three out of five is not two-thirds.
I'm sorry, I apologize. A majority vote versus a supermajority vote. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, we, we could do that, okay? I'm not sure it's binding on anybody who appeals the decision, that they, they may... I don't have a problem doing that, but I don't think if an agreed party appeals, I don't think that the fact that we voted on that this tonight, it stops them from asserting that it didn't comply, that this project is not compliant with the recently passed legislation, and if it was a three-to-five vote, that they did need a supermajority. I guess we could do it, but...
Yeah, I'll just, I'll read from the council's letter, the summary's clear. So a, a simple majority would qualify in mixed-use development and centers of commercial activity in a municipality, including town and city centers. Other commercial districts and cities or towns and rural village districts, provided that not less than ten percent of the housing shall be deemed affordable, in which this project is twelve-point-five percent affordable, for annual income of eighty percent or less. And then the, just the council's recommendation is that the planning board should determine by majority vote as whether the project qualifies under what I just read for approval by the majority vote, and this determination would be made part of the public hearing at that point in time. So just wanted to read directly from that letter, but whatever the board is comfortable with, you can proceed.
I'm personally, I'm okay with a majority vote myself, if anyone else is, or do you want it?
I don't know why it has to be done now. I guess I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable. I'm not really clear why we have the authority to say that, but...
Yeah.
Just a little confused.
Yeah, and if you want to vote on it, we know that this is going to be continued. So if you'd like to do that at your next meeting after you read the correspondence...
Well, why don't we plan on that? I'd rather have a little bit of time to kind of digest this a little bit. Like you said, it's not...
Yeah, it did come through waste, I apologize.
But I think having an heads-up about it, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. So with that, questions or comments relative to this first opening presentation? Mr. Rowland?
Again, knowing fully well that you are going to be coming back for future presentations, I don't think I need to get into any of the details at this stage, but my general comment would be to take any public comments that you got at the library, as well as any public comments you get here into consideration, especially for the town center part of it, to blend it very well with that, you know? So that would be my general comment. Again, as we move forward...
Could you speak a little louder, because we can't hear you in the back.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Yeah, my, my general, my general comment, again, knowing fully well that these proponents would be coming back and making more presentations, the general comment now is to take into account any comments that you get from public into consideration as they develop this project, you know? So in a, in a very broader sense. At this stage, I don't have any other specific comments.
Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, I would say the same. I assume we're going to get into this in further detail. I did have some comments about the parking piece that you talked about, or rather, the lack of specificity in terms of numbers there, and specifically related to the municipal use. I have questions about the parking on Haskell Street and the proposed piece that's going to be retained by the town. Who's maintaining both of those and at what cost? Just for clarity's sake. And then because this is in the new town center zoning district, I have some questions about the facade and those pieces, but I think we'll get into all of that as we...
I, I do know that the town is going to have an architectural peer review that is out for proposal right now. We haven't gotten that back yet, but I had the same thought process that this is our first project in the town center. We do have design standards that are there, and you may be an architect, but I'm certainly not one. So we want to ensure that whatever the design comes out at, it is reviewed by a professional architect.
And just to add on to that, because I don't know if that architect is unlikely to be doing the landscape component of it, but I think that's a big piece of the town center zoning piece. So I would want to make sure that we, we're clear on this...
Yeah, Greg's can do that for us.
Okay, perfect.
It, it may make sense too to kind of segment or sequence the way that we, we hear this presentation. You know, in my mind, I think the most significant thing is going to be a traffic, both from within the interior of the site, you know, you have one point of access on Haskell Street, and also a traffic extraterritorial, particularly during the peak hours in the town center, how this is all going to work. And I could see devoting a meeting to that. I could see devoting a meeting to aesthetics, you know, both landscape, exterior, et cetera. Then I could see devoting a meeting maybe to, to the economics and other miscellaneous things, you know? I'm kind of impressed that the applicant was able to work within the bylaw without requesting us to amend our bylaw like we had to do in Lakeway, because it was so unwieldy as we originally wrote it. But that, that's kind of what I envisioned, you know, and I guess I would take some lead from the planners as to how they thought that might work.
That's definitely... We can do that if you want to...
I know that historically, we've done that with large projects on the planning board. I know the ZBA has done that with large projects as well. And for the public, it allows you to frame or get yourselves ready for a specific meeting, so it's going to be solely tailored around a particular high-level topic that generally takes a lot of time to get through, and that gives them enough time to really, you know, we're not trying to squeeze too much in all at once, right? So we're envisioning, it sounds like, at least three meetings to get through most of this, unless maybe one of the meetings, we find that there's enough information as we're going through that maybe we can cut that down a little bit. We may find that we don't have to have nearly a whole meeting to put off of that, but we should plan for that at the outset.
Yeah, and for the, from the applicant's standpoint, you don't have to bring all the king's bed to every meeting. I think, I think it would, I think it would be more efficient. I think it would be better for the concerned residents and the butters. That way, we're more focused.
Thanks for that. Mr. Thomas?
I agree, without repeating with everybody else already, said the parking definitely, I want to say an issue, but it's going to be one of the, obviously, the major topics. I think the site could use some more public parking. I appreciate the fact that you guys have given or made concessions to for public parking and on-street parking, but I think we all know that the biggest problem in the center of town is parking and traffic. But parking realistically is the, is the, is the hardest thing we have to deal with here. So I would like to see more public parking. How we can determine how we do that is, I don't think it's a discussion for tonight because we're just starting, but I think public parking, in my opinion, is the number-one problem that we have in town, in the center of town, and I think we, I'd like to try to work something out so we could get more of it on this site somehow. That's, I, obviously, if this goes on, we'll have a lot more topics to cover, and I will too, but from what I've seen so far, on my first look at it, it's the public parking that I would like to see more of. Maybe in the front, more to the left. I think there's other spots to do it. Cut the size down a little bit, that might help, but we'll see. See how it goes going from here on in.
And I agree with several of the other board members on their comments. The only thing that I would like to add to that is, it was kind of brought up during your presentation about solar panels and things of that nature, and I, to be honest, haven't had a tremendous amount of time to really drill that deeply into these plans, but I'm not sure if I saw anything relative to solar panels on the roof. We do know that the state is going to an electric future in the not-too-distant future, and I don't recall seeing anything relative to the charging stations for the residents there. And I'm not sure how we're going to handle that as a community anyways, but I think new projects coming in need to have that in the forefront. It's a sustainability thing, and plus, it's also going to align with the overall stake goal.
You, you guys have enough sewer to trigger a sewer extension permit? Are you below the...
There's no sewer extension permit. There's already sewer there, so we have capacity.
No, I'm talking about by adding the fifty-five units. This isn't going to trigger me, but...
Not worried about that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I think the board is all set for right now. I will open up the public comment, but before I do, I just want to try to frame this so that everybody understands where we are relative to public comment. Public comment for this board needs to be relative to the site plan, okay? The site plan and all of the things around it. Now, you've already heard that we're going to have dedicated meetings for specific things. If you want to put a general topic out there that these applicants need to have in their, prepared to answer from their toolboxes, that would be an appropriate time. But how we got here is not going to be discussed because it's got nothing to do with this board. We're only here to discuss the plan, okay? Everyone's clear on that. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard at this time? Yes, ma'am, in the back. Could you please identify yourself with your name and address?
I'm Julie Ross. I live at eighteen Haskell Street, otherwise known as Third Base. Oh, it's right across the street from there. I have a few questions. They are very specific to the site plan.
Thank you.
The first one that I have is in regard to the parking configuration. I looked at this, this new plan this afternoon before I came. And I have had two careers in my life, one of them is driving a commercial vehicle, and I have some real concerns about the size of the parking lot and the available, the available stays for a commercial vehicle to turn around. I don't see that happening.
Okay.
I don't think we'll get an edge of tonight, nor am I asking that, but I, I know you're not going to turn it around. I point a reference, an eighteen-wheeler needs about fifty... I point a reference, an eighteen-wheeler needs about fifty-five feet to make a turn, and I couldn't find a spot where, I think they're probably going to be straight jobs, but it's still an issue. So, and you said we'll bring up parking and all that traffic later, that's okay, but I want to keep it on the agenda. Another question that I had was about the on-street parking that's going to be available, and this might be a different place, but to my knowledge, and I've been here just shy of forty years on Haskell Street, there is an overnight parking ban town-wide. So I think that there might be a loose end here if you're encouraging people to park overnight, when as far as I know, there's a town bylaw that says you cannot park a car on the street overnight.
We'll get clarification on that.
That kind of when I was reviewing everything, that one, with that as well.
Thank you.
Two more, and I'll keep it concise here as close as I can. Looking at the Carlos on the maps that you had online today, I'm wondering about the headlight lights that are going to be coming out. I'm a little bit lower than what it is, I was looking, I wear it about six-hundred-and-thirty-five feet. I think most of the parking is about six-hundred-and-forty-five feet. Those headlights are coming right into my bedroom windows. I was worried about them coming into my living room windows, I will further adapt from that, but they're still going to hit my bedroom windows. What mitigation are available to us that we can try to keep my life from being a constant halogen LED light blasting away all my happiness out the door? Lily, I have an opinion about that. Lastly, the builder yesterday told me the last time when I asked about the length of the shadows. Does that sun comes up from the east? That one's on the little map, but that's like, you know, on the top of the page. Depending on the thirty-five to forty-foot configuration and how wide Haskell Street is, I wanted to know if that shadow was going to hit my yard and on my house. I see now by what we're looking at, I'm just beyond it, I'm still going to, I think, not be looking directly across the street at the apartments, but my neighbors, I mean, they just, I'm just curious about how much shade is going to be on that. And gentlemen, I believe you told me last time you'd have an answer for me for that for tonight. If you need another time, that's okay, I'm going to keep you open for an answer.
Thank you, we have that noted down. Yeah, if you have an answer, you're welcome to provide an answer now, or we can do that at a later date.
We didn't submit that drawing with this because we'd already made this package prior to that last meeting. However, we do have that for future meetings, and there is no shade that would come down.
I have no idea what you said.
Sorry. We do have that for a future meeting, and we'll bring that to show, but the shadows, we'll all go to the north, and there's only one time a day that any shadow comes across.
First thing in the morning, for people that grow things, the best light of the day for outdoor plants is the first thing in the morning.
Yeah, for the residents south of the building on Haskell Street, the shadows don't cross Haskell Street.
I live on Haskell Street.
Right, but the shadow lines only move north and west.
I think we'll have an, we'll have an item for you to review at our next meeting, you didn't have it to provide for us for this meeting.
In my forty-year experience, the sun does not go that way. I live there, I see when the sun comes up, I plant according to it, so we'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Could you just say first you should come to the microphone?
Oh, do you? Yes, all right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir, so it was just pointed out to me that, I didn't realize we had microphones down here, so those that are able to, could they please get up and walk to the microphone, I appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Pete Ybalski, I'm representing the McLean's Human Trust, which is that sixteen Chase Terrace, which directly abuts the project at hand. That border, along that line, that they're planning on putting all those parking spaces, there were a bunch of questions about that site plan regarding, number one, tree removal. It was a very generic tree removal plan, I mean, there was, it looks like they just provide a hatch mark, and it's just a clear cut, so calipers, trees in question, there's a twenty-two-inch maple, which provides a bunch of shade for the house itself, that's of an issue. There's an existing chain-link fence that's vegetated, it's the only barrier between those neighbors and this new development. Now, the parking lot's going to be raised a couple of feet, they're looking at providing chain-link fence on top of that, cars pulling in directly shining their headlights into the kitchen windows of that house. And quite honestly, it's, it needs some work. One of the problems, though, with the dimensional requirement is that that ten-foot area that they're looking to develop, it's a site-retaining wall, they've got a fence, they've got a guardrail, there's virtually no room for any sort of landscape screen planting. So, you know, something kind of, I think, needs to be addressed, either it becomes compact parking, you know, maybe that's where they're charging the small electric cars, I don't know, but, you know, those are certainly issues. You know, grading and drainage, you know, some of the, the... There was an area where they're providing the cul-de-sac chambers, you know, their drainage field is all subsequent to some sort of, you know, soil testing. We know that there is high groundwater on that site, that's forty feet away from, or plus or minus, seventy-seven cul-de-sac chambers draining, you know, and I understand that there's municipal backup, but at the end of the day, that could pose problems, so looking into things like breakout protection, or, you know, when all that information is provided, I think it really needs to be paid attention to, because of all the sites, of four, like, physical butters on the property, that one house, they're losing all their privacy, they're getting all the drainage. In terms of lighting, they're putting seventeen thousand lumens between two posts, less than, approximately ten feet off the property line. I mean, it's, the study needs, it needs to be studied much, much better.
There was a comment from Graves relative to lighting, and another additional lighting plan is going to be provided.
The photometrics should go further than the property line, they shouldn't stop at the property line, because the people being affected should be considered beyond that, and that's, I think, important for everybody to study.
Now, Pete, you're a landscape director.
Yes.
Maybe it would be a good idea if the applicants shared the contact info of their landscape architect with Pete, and Pete may have specific suggestions relative.
I saw the landscape plan, and there is absolutely zero attention to that border.
I'm not saying that plan is the one that's going to get approved.
I understand, I understand.
Maybe, if it does get approved. But maybe you could be in contact with their landscape architect, because they, you, it seems like you have some pretty good suggestions for protection of the privacy of the residents along Chase Terrace. With respect to the stormwater, we have, I'm not a P E, but we have Graves Engineering who's going to be reviewing this. I'm not aware that there is high groundwater there, but you're probably right. But Graves is going to be reviewing that, and I assume that, as Bowler, who is a pretty good engineering firm, has stated, that the post-development runoff is going to be less than exists now, so.
Yes, for sure.
But that's something we're going to be looking at.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Paul Zeikis from One Beaver Drive. I've been working with host of neighbors and concerned residents in town with respect to this proposal. We would like to present you with a petition that is signed by three-hundred-and-eighty people in opposition.
I understand that you're not, this will remain with the board.
Sure, that's fine, yep, yep. And that petition was previously presented to the Board of Selectmen, although it was never publicly acknowledged at their meeting, so I appreciate you taking the time out, moving the location, and being able to hear folks out, it's very important.
I will clarify, I personally did not make that decision.
Yes, no, I understand, and that's why we've gone to great lengths to provide you with the copy.
Thank you.
Also, to streamline the process and not have a dozen or fifteen people get up with individual concerns or questions, I'm generally going to mention some things, it would make good sense for the developers to pay attention to these things, because they're obvious concerns. But, first of all, on the overall project, we believe it to be an extreme interpretation of the town center district. It seems to exceed the obvious intent of the zoning provisions. Eight units are allowed by right in that zone, even the RFP indicated eight units by right, nine or more by special permit, so I don't think anyone, even people who received a copy of the RFP, ever understood that it would be a development of this magnitude. Touching on what other folks touched on with respect to traffic, debt generally a concern, I know most people refer to it, well, it used to be a school, the bottom line is, it isn't a school anymore, and this is our one opportunity to do better in the center of town, and to make the traffic flow better in the center of town. You know, sometimes people coming up Main Street are all the way down to Trinity Church at three o'clock in the afternoon. So there's a lot of issues there with respect to the access, you know, one entrance and one exit in the neighborhood of some of these folks, I mean, that's pretty harsh. Additionally, with respect to parking, the supposed public parking spaces, twenty of them, that were going to be allowed for the general public, this is going to be a busy place, those are likely going to be taken up by either the businesses or overrun from the tenants themselves. And to echo Mr. Thomas's concerns, parking is probably the single biggest issue we have in the center of town. I mean, this is our, as the developer indicated, this is the biggest parcel in the town center district. This is our one and only opportunity to ensure that we have adequate parking in the center of town. We're not going to be able to get adequate parking piecemeal. This is bigger, this parcel is bigger than our town common, which is not owned by the town, it's owned by the church. So this is a very significant asset, and, you know, your consideration of multiple meetings is very welcome, very welcome, because there was one presentation given publicly, and then subsequent to that, there wasn't comment allowed at Selectmen's meeting, so I think you might be getting the brunt of that, so I, you know, forgive you for that, but there's people that have been quiet for a while, and they'd like to share their concerns. Obviously, with the institution of the CPA tax, one of the things that we're trying to achieve in this town is recrea, you know, acquiring recreational space, and what we're doing here is, you know, we're losing our recreational space. So, you know, again, this is a quality-of-life issue in many respects, so combined with the traffic, the parking, the quality of life, and certainly with the density of this project, fifty-five residential units at a time, and we have hundreds and hundreds of humans permitted and being constructed across the town, I believe it's those things that really create a nuisance, and there's no question in our minds that this is something that is really too large, too cumbersome for the community, and is going to have negative implications for years to come, rather than be able to preserve as much as we can of that site. So it would be a positive benefit for the community for generations to come. The other thing, on the tenants, that's a big issue, I mean, all of us have been to Amici's or Willie's at one point in time. Those parking lots are full, the bank's upset because they're even parking where you get your, you put your ATM card in there. Parked everywhere, they're parked at the cleaners, they're parked at the medical offices on Route one forty. You're looking at somewhere with regularity, ninety cars parked there. They do have valet, it necessitates that, so we certainly do want to add vibrancy to the downtown, we want to create energy and enthusiasm, and we want to generate visits to the center of town, but we also need to do it responsibly, and there is not going to be adequate parking. I'd also like to know how individuals are going to enter the retail space. Are there doors behind by the parking area, or will everyone be brought around, brought around front? So those are a handful of things that I wanted to mention, and in addition to that, the simple majority versus the supermajority, obviously, we would be very opposed to that, and we believe that to be grounds for appeal.
That is your choice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience, yes, sir, please? Do you have, can you come down to the microphone, please?
Eddie Law, twenty-five Wheelock Street. I didn't sign that, so I, you know, I'm not part of his crew or anything, however, my opinion's mostly formed tonight by that simple majority thing. I wanted to keep an open mind, and I've actually talked to Michelle Conlon through DM about this, and I wasn't against it, however, the fact that they want to go simple majority to, or super to simple feels really slimy to me. That's, you know, so we only need one less vote, which now I'm actually against the plan. Also, just even the parking alone, like, all right, we'll give you twenty free parking, or public parking spots, but we're going to put it all the way on the other end, so none of the other businesses in the center of town is going to be useful, and I think, I agree with what he was saying, how the businesses and the residents are going to take it up anyways, so I'm generally against this whole plan. I think, like he was saying, it's probably too big, I don't know if he's saying that, maybe I just made that up, but I think it's too big, I think there's not nearly enough parking, and the whole supermajority, the simple majority really rubs me the wrong way, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You're sure?
Okay, just in specific response to the simple versus supermajority piece, so it's incumbent on us as a developer to understand exactly what the conditions of approval are and what rules and regulations we're subject to, and so we sought that clarification from our council internally, and then once we get the outcome of that, we share it with the town, because obviously that's a finding that we have, and we'd like to feel that we're sharing the information that we got. So, just, it's a standard order of business for us, just as a point of clarification.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard?
I want to say something.
Sure, please.
My name is Shee, and I live one forty South Street. It's not immediate in vicinity, but is in the general area. I think that more of the residents should be considered for this project, not just the immediate neighborhood, because as other, I echo other people said, this has a longer and a bigger impact on the town itself. It will impact a lot more people's life, not just parking, traffic, although those are all great concerns, and also water. I mean, it's also against the general public's desire to create green environment. This is against all of those, plus more. I mean, we already, for example, water, we already have limited resources. I mean, we constrain neighborhoods' water usage, especially in summertime. I mean, now, I mean, we had a water pipe project or something going on for two years already, and it's still not completed. And our water pressure is still running very low, not as they promised after completion of the project that water pressure is going up. It's not going up. So to me, this is bogus plan, so this needs to be, this needs to be seriously considered.
I understand.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, and we'll get with the engineering department relative to the water pressure and water resource issue. Yes, sir?
I guess I'm leaving, thirty-one Witcheset Avenue. I've got a few, a few questions, a few points, actually. And I know you're going to take this up in other separate meetings, but I figured I'd just bring it up now. So the first point is, I know the architectural design, there's going to be additional review of that, but it is in the bylaw relative to slopes, slope roofing that there would be gables. It seemed to me, as I read the bylaw and as I wrote it on as a town meeting member, that there would be gables when it came to slope roofs. I know that it looks right now like it fits in with the rest of the the town center and even reminds me a little bit of Town Hall, but the bylaw mentioned gables and those slopes. So I think that's something to definitely look at. Number two is, again, with the articulation of the building, I like how there's a separation to make it, you know, seem, you know, forward and backwards in terms of breaking it up, instead of being one massive block. However, I, my interpretation of that bylaw was also looking at it from a materials perspective so that to minimize the the vertical height look, right? I know there's a, certainly on Maple Avenue, you have that articulation well done, I think. The the brick and then the the hardy board, right, that would give it a different perspective. But the side along Haskell and then the and then the little piece that's by the parking lot and in the back has just, you know, one color for that section top, you know, top down. So it really stands out as this large building if you're one of these residents that are sitting, you know, next door or a visitor coming in the back end. You know, I think Mr. Zinkus brought up a point about parking and entrances. You know, certain, you know, we we are a driving society, right? We haven't got to the point where this is centralized, where a lot of residents are living downtown. Of course, this is going to add a lot of residents, but, you know, the, you know, they're they're coming in through the interior, you know, interior ways or or along the sidewalks. So, you know, I think a lot of that design perspective being in the front, which is pretty on the front, right? But if you lose that aspect from the back end where the majority of folks that are around town driving into, they're not experiencing the wow, you know, the wow factor coming to this property, right? So I think that's a, it's a design point, right? I know it's not, you know, moving the needle, but from the design. Again, you know, this is, he goes, brought up that this is a a one one and done, right? One and done chance, right? So I think that whatever we do from a design perspective really should be from a perspective of it's that one project that's going to set us for a course of the next project and the next project, because whatever is there now is going to be looked at for the next developer saying, well, look next door, you have, you allowed that, right? So why didn't you, you know, allow me in their views? Next thing is, you know, perspective on parking, I just wanted to add one element to that. If anybody here has ever gone to Tavern on the Square, right, one hundred and thirteen parking spots are in front of it according to the site plan, right? Right at that level, not even including the little side lot down below, one hundred and thirteen. On a Friday night, you're never going to get a parking spot there, right? You're visiting there, and and this is long peak hours, right? And I know that this, in this case here, we have three retail units, but it's about what kind of retail is there, right? Is it, are there all restaurants? You're going to get, you're going to eat up on all those parking spots, right? In my personal opinion. Next is, I thought from the, looking at the landscaping pieces, the, I mean, so from the architectural designs, I think there's a discrepancy between the tenant A, B, and C layouts. This is, you know, somebody else is probably going to pick this up. I'm not the only smart person in the room, but I would say, you know, tenant, if you look at the external signage, I'm just going to write it out, no, no point of putting it on screen. The external signage document, it shows that tenant A has one door, tenant B's got three doors, and tenant C's got one door. But then you look at the ground, ground and first floor plan, and it shows that tenant A has four doors, tenant B's got one door, and tenant C has no doors on the Maple Avenue side. It's probably just some reconfiguration on a design, but just wanted to call that out so that someone who looks at that can take a look better. Next is, oh, the patio. So the, so I I know the patio along for the retail side is open to the public, and I appreciate that. It's probably going to be full with a lot of teenagers coming out of middle school, right? So that's going to be in the next hangout spot. Good thing, they need somewhere to go. Then, but the, my concern will be about the the private space, the private patio space, being of such a prominent piece there right at the corner, and what regulations does the planning board have that can give me pose on that, you know? Is that up to the regulation of rules of the the property manager, right? Can, does that mean they can have, you know, a tenant can have a private party there till eleven o'clock at night? And they have a very prime location right on Maple and Haskell, you know? Who who says what? Do we, does the town have any say over, you know, if there's a a large party there with with a sound system? Right? So, right? And that affects everybody driving by, visuals, the neighbors, right? So I'm concerned about that that patio space and what rules will be there. And that's, and you can also kind of extend it also to the to the little private patio spaces for the ground floors tenants on on Haskell, right? Because they also have a private space as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Bearing in mind that we have multiple meetings still coming up to talk specifically to some of these items that have been brought up in general, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard?
Good evening. My name's Sean Shabelli. I live at thirty-eight Nolton Ave. Nolton Ave is two streets over from the Beale School project. Have a couple of questions, try not to be repetitive from what others have already said. Have a couple of general questions up front. You mentioned that the board is going to take this in bits and pieces, which is a great idea. I'm wondering, will there be opportunity for public comment all along the way?
Absolutely. This board has public comment on all open hearings.
Fantastic. Just wanted to make sure of that. Generally, you know, we have a housing shortage. I'm in favor of apartments personally. I'm in favor of the Beale School project being redeveloped and having an important residential component to it. Generally, I have a lot of issues with this plan as it's presented now, and I'm hoping that the planning board will take great caution in reviewing every step along the way. I'm sure you folks all take your your role seriously, and you'll keep the town's interest in mind. A couple of general things, which I was a bit surprised about. I was surprised that the signal intersection right at the Beale and West, West Main Street and Maple Ave was not being utilized. I thought that might make an entry point into the, for traffic flow. Generally, I think it's problematic that there's one point of egress and exit from the property, and I really think that's unfair to the folks that live at Haskell Street. I think it's going to put a real burden, and it's going to have a significant negative impact there. You probably all know that Wesleyan Street, the houses on Wesleyan Street are built right at, right near the the street. Unlike my street, the next street back, the houses on our street are set back, and it makes a dramatic difference. I talked to a neighbor who's lived on Wesleyan his whole life, and I asked him, why was there such a difference? And his best answer was, many, many years ago, when I think there was a farm called Gage Farm, his understanding was, a lot of the structures on Wesleyan Street housed some of the workers on this farm. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but this is what my neighbor shared. He told me that he's old enough, and he's been around long enough, that one of the residential properties on Wesleyan Street was once the the blacksmith shop. One of the original buildings there was was from part of that farm. Anyway, the houses on that street are very tight, are very close to the street. If you ever go down that street, a lot of cars are parked on that street, and it's difficult for buses to get by. It's difficult for two-way traffic to get by. Unfortunately, I think whatever the outcome is, it's only going to exacerbate the situation on Wesleyan Street. I think there's going to be a spillover onto the street that I live on. Throughout the pandemic, I've worked at home for the better part of the past two years, and I sit in a front room in my house eight hours a day or longer, and I see traffic. And when you're home a lot and you you see the rhythm of your neighborhood, you see the rhythm of daily life, and there are a lot of cars that use our street as a cut through. It's a logical thing to do. I have no problem with that. My problem is a lot of people use excessive speed on a regular basis, and regrettably, it's local residents who know the ways around town. They don't want to deal with traffic backing up in the center of town, so they drive around. I think that there's a way to resolve that, but it's a long-term public education effort. But that's, that's really significant. Generally, with this project, I think it's a bit big. I'm surprised that, let's see, there's an affordable component here, but it's at eighty percent of AMI. I I'd like to, well, I I wish there was more affordable, more affordability there. Eighty percent people, apartments being available at eighty percent of average median income or area median income. Technically, that meets the definition of affordable housing, but yet there are other layers, too. There's affordable housing at at lower levels of area median income, sixty percent, thirty percent. And I I don't know how much this helps alleviate the affordable housing crisis that we have really all throughout Massachusetts or eastern and central Massachusetts. Alternative energy, it'd be nice to see, as the chairman mentioned, some options for alternative energy. I know from past experience, there's a culvert, and I asked this at the public hearing, which I think was a year ago tonight. I believe there's a culvert underground to help with water runoff, and it goes underneath Wesleyan Street, and it goes underneath Nolton Ave, it picks up some storm drains, and I believe it dumps out in the small patch of woods behind the Patton School. And it goes underneath near the municipal field, and if people are familiar, it travels underneath Grafton Street and Route one forty. I don't imagine there'd be a dramatic difference, although there is more surface area in this plan for parking, so there's going to be more stormwater runoff, although if the engineer says it's not going to be a net increase, I'll, I'll take his word on it.
It can't be.
Elevators, are there elevators planned in the building? Okay, just, I figured there would be, I just wanted to make sure. And maybe somebody knows, for perspective purposes, I see that the height, as the buildings are drawn now, will not exceed forty feet. I I asked this earlier, I didn't get an answer. Does anybody know the height of the Beale School building right now? And I only ask that in the context of trying to understand if this new project, whatever the final outcome might be, if it gets approved, how that will compare to what we know what the Beale School height is right now?
Yes, I was able to get that information from the public buildings.
It is from the front of the Beale School at the, at the top of the stairs at the Beale School to the top is thirty-six feet, and from the bottom to the top is a little less than forty feet. So the building will not be any higher visually than it is today.
That's very helpful, thank you. Couple of other quick points. Height of the building, traffic, traffic is, we all know the traffic issue. Traffic issue is never going to get better. Retail, there are several vacancies vacancies right in the downtown area as it stands right now. And I want to say something quickly about the downtown area. I said this a year ago. For 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 comparison purposes or for perspective, the town of Hudson is not far from here. When we first moved to town almost thirty years ago, just by coincidence, my wife and I had to go to a law firm in Hudson to actually sign the papers to purchase our house, and it was my first time in the town of Hudson. And back then, the downtown was, you know, deader than a doornail, for lack of a better term. And it's just amazing, and it's an incredible municipal success story, it's a wonderful story, what downtown Hudson is like right now. Downtown Hudson has an infrastructure that could be a downtown destination for for people from many communities. As great as our community is, I don't see that here. Now, people could disagree with me, and, you know, people might come from quite a distance, you know, not a reasonable distance, to go to places like Amici's or Willie Steakhouse or maybe one or two other places. But I I question how, given the limited infrastructure that we have, and for me, our downtown goes from the traffic light at Route one forty, Grafton Street, Main Street, all the way down to, you could be argued, the the White Hen pantry, the liquor store next door, that's pretty much the essence of it. Infrastructure-wise, that's very, 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 very limited. And unless there's a massive case of urban renewal, we have what we have now with some changes along the way. Obviously, this is going to be the the linchpin of any downtown revitalization. I I just, I think apartments should be there. I think there should be an affordable component in there. I think, from a personal perspective, I think it's a little bit too ambitious, and I would hope that the planning board takes that into consideration and and thinks about all of the aspects. And I, before I step away, I just want to make sure that I haven't overlooked anything, right? Bear with me for one second. Existing culvert, the elevators. Ample parking. I asked this meeting at the public hearing, and the assistant town manager told me a year ago, when the downtown was repaved, there was a net loss of eleven parking spaces, on-street parking. And I really think it's unfair of the town to put the burden on this project to ask these folks to commit some of their space to public parking. We have a public parking issue, but I don't, in a way, I think it's unfair of the town to ask these developers to bear the burden of some of the public, public parking. I personally didn't agree with taking away the eleven on-street parking spaces along Main Street, because I think that's a detriment, and it inhibits the local businesses there, and especially during COVID, they relied on people, takeout, people shifted their businesses to takeout. Sorry, okay. So I I would ask you just to, you know, there might be other alternatives for parking in the downtown area, but in in closing, I think the plan as it's constituted is going to cause the Haskell Street and Maple Ave intersection to fail, meaning there's going to be terrible slow, slow traffic, and it's going to, and it's going to have a compounding effect down the street. That's all. All right, thank you.
So if the applicants can just please note for their traffic study to really concentrate on the flow of not just the site itself, but the surrounding streets as well. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
John Scott, thirty-nine Wesleyan Street. I'm going to echo Mr. Sibelli and Mr. Zinkus's comments and take a lot of the time. I'm just going to add a couple of the others. I think the project is very large, the number of units is way too big. Very concerned with the traffic and concerned with scheduling and figuring out how they're going to do the deliveries, trash pickups. There's just so many different things with the 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 less roadway we have up there now. If you go up there right now in Amici's or the Pizzeria's getting a delivery, all the logistic companies now are using tractor-trailer trucks, taking up a whole lane, causing a lot of backup and problems with that. So that's pretty much it. Echo the sentiments, Austin.
Thank you. Dina. Ms. Nichols.
Dina Nichols, eighteen Noel Colony Drive. So when I looked at the plan, I was concerned about the lack of green space, and it seems like a lot of the green space is probably the baseball field that's being designated as our area for that particular purpose. The front of the building, I, again, I thought there'd be more, for some reason, when we went through the whole process of envisioning downtown and the project, we did all our little workshops, I attended them all, I went to strategic plan, you name it. And I think, I think we might have been dreaming a little bit about what we could have accomplished on that site, having a mixed use with resident, enough residential to make it viable for somebody to want to do it, and enough parking to accommodate the needs of the community, and enough green space to be able to provide the recreational space people are looking for. I went back before I came tonight and looked at the the surveys that were done about the Beale School, what would we just like to see there? And there was actually a graph, which was really interesting, it was on the Downtown Association website, and on one end of the spectrum is residential housing, on the other end of the spectrum is green space. And recreation, residential versus recreational. Recreational was exactly what they wanted, residential was what they didn't want. Now, I'm not necessarily opposed to mixed use, but I do think when I look at this site plan, I see asphalt and concrete, and then I see a ball field in the back. So I would just ask that you consider the fact that we really, when you, when we look back at what the town has asked for, it's really, they're looking for more, more green, more of the round dots with the trees, more, particularly in the front. And I understand the the component, the commercial piece of it all, which is really a driver, right? We want to get all that going. And I think that's going to be a challenge, too. With the parking, when I looked at where you'd need to park to be able to get up there, number one, but number two, I actually visited Ace Flats in Reading, which was beautiful. And, you know, no reflection on these guys, I think they do a really nice job. It was beautiful. They have a parking garage, they have this commuter rail walk a distance, so it's very different type of area, but the commercial space they opened a year ago, it's all still vacant. So I I I think we have to be realistic about what we're thinking we're going to achieve with this project. And I think for this particular meeting, I think being And I think, for this particular meeting, I think being mindful of green space would be what I would ask you to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wished to be heard? Okay. I'm going to take that as a, we're done for right now, okay? Because I do have a lot of, this, this stack isn't going away, and we've got a lot of other hearings that happen tonight. So, mindful that we have additional hearings coming up, we'll have a schedule that we'll work with the applicant on. You can check with the town's website to find out what the next schedule will be, and I encourage you to come back and, and be prepared for that particular item. As I see people starting to get up and leave, which is perfectly fine, you're not required to stay, although I have to, I know you don't. Please just be quiet when you're leaving, and, and if you're having conversations, be further down the hall, because it, it will come back and it'll be hard for us to hear inside here, okay?
Do you know when the next meeting is going to be?
Yes. We're gonna, we're gonna continue it, and you'll get it, but it'll actually be January five, twenty twenty-three. And there will not be any additional notices that goes out once this hearing has been opened, your, your notification is over, okay? You'll just have to constantly check in with the town website to find out what the next hearing is on, okay? And with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the one through seven Maple Avenue, Beale Commons, site plan approval and special permits until January fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See you guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Yeah, very welcome.
Give them a couple of moments to get it. Okay. Let's go with, okay. Okay, as we continue, our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for a proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval. Location, forty, four forty Hartford Turnpike. Mr. Rorlakis will be recusing himself. We have a letter requesting a continuance for this project. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments relative to the continuance request? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval, four forty Hartford Turnpike, to January fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for an expansion of a parking lot, site plan approval for AS Relti LLC. Location is two Wesleyan Terrace. Is the applicant present? Mr. Granio. Please introduce yourself and tell us why we're here again.
Although it's brawling. For the record, John Granio, Jane Granio Associates. We were before you last month with a proposal for two Wesleyan Ave, which is, oh, Wesleyan Terrace, rather, it's the building that is behind the post office. The owner who purchased that has a dental practice that's moving in there, and my client who is, actually, this is in the center, downtown overweight district, and being the, the good neighbors that they are, they are creating more parking downtown for, for anyone that's interested. So we're expanding parking, having this, giving a little bit more room to, uh, to be able to drive and ride, riding aisle and park in this area. The last piece of the puzzle that the board was looking for was some additional landscaping. Since our last meeting, I went out to the site to double-check where there was existing landscaping, all of the landscaping that is out there, some trees there, along the property line, but they're on the abutting property. And where there's a picket fence that goes along the frontage here, and it turns the corner, and then it turns into a chain link fence. So, all along that area, what we are going to propose is, I think it's a total of twenty-three privet bushes, which is just nice, it's not a really wide area, so we don't want anything that's going to have a lot of roots that are going to grow, or anything that's going to start hanging over into the parking lot and, and encroaching on it. So we are proposing a line of privates, which is a nice clean hedge, so that would, um, provide some good screening, especially for any, any lights for cars pulling in there. And then, the backyard area of the abutting property, it's a little more open, there are some, some larger, there's some trees along the front, and then there's a couple of big trees out in the back, but there's kind of a gap in there. So, in that area, we're proposing to have arborvitae's, so that, again, cars pulling in there, it'll provide a little bit more higher, a little denser and higher screening, especially in the backyard area of the abutting property to the, to the south. We did address all of Graves' comments, I guess when they might have picked up the, the package, um, there was a couple of typos on the drainage, which we addressed, and there was a form that needed to be signed for the stormwater, which I signed. So as soon as we saw that, we forwarded electronic copies over to them as well, but it was more of, you know, I-dotting, T-crossing, nothing that's going to change anything. But for the record, we did submit that right away back into them, just so that everybody has that on the record. I think that's really the long and short of it. If there are any questions or comments. I, I think, just being out there and looking at what the conditions are, this would be more than adequate screening, given what they have for existing landscaping along the side yard, and then beaving up a little bit over there with that gap, is I think that's going to be good screening for both properties. That'll, that'll provide, uh, good buffer zones and good year-round screening. So, anything else? Thank you.
Questions from the board? Mr. Rau?
No major question, but I thought last time there was some talk of talking to the neighboring post office folks on one of the, I don't know.
Yeah, there's an area over there which is, I, I guess it's technically post office area, post office yard area, but it's a little overgrown, but my client went over, I think they, they're just cleaning it up.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Jerry?
Jonathan, the neighbor on the other side, there were some questions at the last meeting as to where the property line was. Have you established that?
It's right along where the existing fence is.
And there was some comment of the fence being in disrepair. Is that fence on your client's property, or is it on the neighbor?
It's on my client's property, and that's where, um, the, the fencing along the front is really unsightly. That's that bull, that fence. I'm going to remove that, but then along where the chain link fence is, that's going to get removed, and we're going to introduce the, uh, the hedge row.
Got it. Just, it was still looked like the fence was on the plant with the bushes, so I wasn't sure if the fence was staying or being removed.
No, no, that's gotta go.
Okay.
Mr. Rorlakis.
The fence of the post office is the only thing I had, and that's already straightened out, so.
And the only other thing I had, I think I brought a comment up for the parking of those two spaces that are kind of angled, that, on the bottom corner of where the building is, if you, if you, I don't know.
Over here?
Yeah, that, I'd kind of like to see if we could dedicate those for employee parking only, just to ensure that you run, you eliminate some of the risk of people backing into that other sp, space that was kind of sitting up there.
I'll talk to my client, see if she puts something, some signage up, same employees.
Like I said, I did, I don't think it has to be part of the decision, I just think that it's something that really should be considered, because it just brings on the higher risk, that's all.
I think right now that the tenant in the back, I think he uses, he parks in the back kind of in that area, so it, it might be a good, just to make sure there's dedicated parking for the back tenant, so people coming in and out of the dentist's office.
All of you want to do.
Okay.
With that, any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
I want to know how.
Could you please give a name and address, please?
Philip Reno, uh, six Wesleyan Terrace, so I'm the neighbor.
Yep.
I want to know how high would be the hedge row, the hedge, uh...
Although, the privates will grow, I mean, they can grow substantially high, it's typically something that you keep, um, you know, you keep a man cured.
Yeah.
So, I, I would anticipate that you manicure them, you know, three to four feet high, higher than, higher than you would have for headlights of a car.
So it's, it's not, it's not above the, uh, like a normal fence, it, it's under the...
Yeah, if, if you let them grow, they will, it's something that you, that does need to be, um, you know, trimmed annually, so.
So you, you will take some space from the parking lot to plant them?
Correct. So there is green space between the edge of the parking lot and where the property line is with that chain link fence is. So, there's, there's about four feet there that we can, that's, that's where we're looking to plant those, so, um, there's plenty of room for them, then they don't get too big, but they do, they do need to be pruned in.
I don't mind, but go, go big, just want to know. And on the others, and the rest of the old fence, you're not planting anything, uh, as a hedge row.
Further down to where the fence turns?
Yeah.
In, from about midway, from about where, almost where your backyard begins?
Yeah.
We're going to change over to arborvitae's, so that those will grow taller?
Yeah.
And have a, a year-round screening, so there's more privacy, especially for your backyard.
I didn't, I didn't understand what, what was you...
Arborvitae, is that? It's like, uh...
Yeah.
Typically, people have them on either side of their front door, they're, they're tall and narrow evergreens.
Okay. And would, would you keep some of the trees that are already there?
The trees that are there are yours, so yes.
But there is, yeah, I think there's, uh...
There, there's, if, any of the, the larger trees in the back, we're not touching any of those.
Yeah.
We're just kind of filling in the gaps.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience wished to be heard? Yes, sir.
John Chigali, thirty-eight Nolte Ave, I'm right around the corner, I'm closer to this project than the Beale School, so I'll take the opportunity to ask, just coming up here tonight.
Can you put that to the microphone?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thirty-eight Nolte Ave, Shrewsbury. Just coming up here tonight, I noticed a large commercial vehicle parked on their property, and I've seen it there a couple times. It's not an eighteen-wheeler, I'm just wondering if that's a temporary thing, or if, I, I imagine that's not even allowed by law, by zone in town, but there's a large, um, United Rental, large enough commercial vehicle to move like those moving pods, the rectangular boxes that people move, get when they, it was, it's backed down to that property tonight, I've seen it there a couple of times. I know there's been some construction there, I didn't know if it was related to that, and I guess I'm asking the general question, will there be any commercial vehicles parked there?
No, um, and there was construction done when they did the, the fit-out for the dentist's office.
I saw that.
Um, but to my knowledge, no, they, they, there's a, a, a small office in the back, like two people parked there, and then the dentist's office, so we don't anticipate any large commercial vehicles parked there, um, and I have no idea what the, the truck had stated now.
Could you worry me here, I'm, I'm having a hard time. Wesleyan, where's the, uh...
Post office is right here.
Post office.
So, and then, here's, here's the, the curb cut where you pull in to the building right now.
The vehicle is parked right there, it's right there right now.
No idea. Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to be a permanent thing.
Dentist's office, I...
Yeah, now.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience wished to be heard? Seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I move that we close the public hearing for the, uh, two Wesleyan Terrace, the expansion of the parking lot, site plan approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before us, we have a draft decision for this project. There's nothing super crazy about it, no waivers, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the decision?
No questions.
Which, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Photometric plan, that was...
Oh, oh, there are, there are a couple waivers that, that are requested. One is to not provide a landscape plan, which they ultimately ended up having to supply landscape pan, plan for. Photometric plan, I think we, we discussed that at our, our last meeting, so I didn't see a major problem with that one. Traffic safety, requiring a traffic study, um, I, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, didn't find that to be a problem. Impact report as far as financial, we discussed that as not being a problem. And, um, that's pretty much it, so if you want to include that, yes.
There's a typo in that last waiver.
Page two? Where are we looking at?
Findings three D. You have the word five and the number three.
Ah, okay.
Oh, okay. You also have that one?
Yep.
Okay, so there's a minor modification, uh, typo on, that's actually page three?
Yes, under findings, number three D.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, is there any other questions? Thank, entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the, the decision entitled, Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval to Wesleyan Terrace for AS Relti LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business, let me sort this right here. The next item of business is a continued public hearing for a proposed automobile dealership, site plan approval, Boxers Free Worcester LLC, location seven zero one Boston Turnpike. Please introduce yourselves. Just wait for him to set up, if I could.
Excuse me?
I'm just waiting for him to set up.
Yep, absolutely.
So before you get started, Mr. Ricker, I just want to remind the public, although this is a continued public hearing, we opened and did not take any comments at our last meetings, and this is technically the first public hearing, um, that we have audience participation for, as well as a, um, presentation. I thought so, I was saying, continued public hearing, yeah. Good evening to the chair and, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and, um, I'm an attorney representing the applicant for this proposal. We are here tonight, to my left is Maureen McHugh, who is with McMahon Associates, who is the, um, traffic engineer for us. Also with us tonight is Mike Clemmie, uh, who is our, um, who's the, he's the, I'm looking for my notes here, give me a second there. How did that happen? Do you know what it is, I got so many things today. All right, let's see here. Excuse me, Mike. You just give me one second, okay? You know what? That's mine. Thank you. Okay, so we also have Mike Clemmie seated to my right, he's the vice president of Purchasing and Property Management for Subaru of New England. We also have with us Brian Dumay, seated in the seat behind us, who is the vice president of Market Development. We have Jason Patrick here from Patrick Motors. Patrick Healy from Liston Associates is our engineer, and he will speak more directly about the plans. Now, we also have Todd Stalker, who is the general manager of the, of Patrick Motors, which as you know, is presently located at Route nine and Elm Street. That is a seven-acre parcel, and as you know, that... That is a seven acre parcel, and as you know, that has been kind of tight for them over the years, and, uh, being a favored retailer for Subaru of New England, Mr. Clemmie's group decided to try to move them to a new location, a larger location. This is a twenty-five acre parcel that we're talking about on Route Nine and South Street, at, at that corner, of which approximately fourteen acres would be developed as part of this proposal. The, the buildings in this proposal, and all of the work in this proposal, except for one drainage, stormwater drainage detention area, would be within the commercial district zone, all of it, including the two entrances, one of which is on South Street, and one of which is on, um, Boston Turnpike. It's an entrance and, and an exit, right turn in, right turn out on, uh, Boston Turnpike. As I said, Patrick, uh, has been, Patrick Motors has been in existence for approximately fifty years. They've been in Shrewsbury since the old Tudor Motorin was there, if you can, some of us can recall that, those of us that are old enough. They have done well there, as I said, they're a, um, they're a favored retailer for Subaru of New England. Mike will, will tell you that if he has a chance to. They have a history of philanthropy between them and Subaru of New England, they, they've given, literally millions of dollars to various charities throughout the communities that they serve, including this community and the Worcester area, in Patrick's case. We, where have we been? We've been to the Z B A, which is still ongoing, and that, um, hearing was the other night. We've been, continued now to December nineteenth. This, the traffic peer review just came in the day after our hearing, so, um, Maureen is here to, to talk about that to a limited degree, she hasn't, I would, I would assure you, she hasn't had the opportunity to totally digest everything that, that, or, or resolve in our own team, all of the issues that have been raised, but she can address some of those. This is a fifty-seven thousand plus square foot facility, it is a state of the art building, it is totally H V A seed, it is designed for various reasons, including soundproofing, to keep the service area quiet, and to keep everything inside. The, we had a neighborhood meeting, uh, a little over two weeks ago, and we met with a number of neighbors in an effort to address questions that they had about this particular site. We, we felt that we had addressed a number of those concerns. We also, in light of the traffic, um, peer review, made some decisions relative to the South Street entrance, and we suggested at the Z B A hearing that we would be fine with a right in and right out type of, um, entrance exit there, so that we're not crossing traffic, not causing any, um, backup on the street itself. Any queues would therefore be within the property itself, queues coming out would be within the property itself and not on the street. So, um, we've, I think, come a long way with, with various issues. We talked about the lighting of the site, uh, it's all DAX Sky compliant, and, uh, Mike also points out that there, he has a habit of, of, on his, on the developments that he does, and he does the developments for Subaru. He separately wires the, the poles for the lights, so that if he needs to shut one off, because the neighbor said that it's bothering him, he shuts it off. He has a, um, method where they, they turn the lights down to a certain degree after closing. Of course, they can't shut them off, because we need security for new vehicles, and this day and age, you definitely have to have security, and that's something that, um, they do address, however, with dimmer lighting. So, um, one of the things, another one of the things that we addressed with the neighbors was there was a, a request for us to increase the buffer on the South Street, Street side of our plans, where the detention basin is along South Street, and, and Patrick will address that when he's going through the plan, but we, we did determine that we can do that, and, uh, we have a twenty to twenty-five foot buffer of tree area that we do not have to disturb in order to build this detention area, okay? I think, at this stage, I'd ask Patrick to, to take the reins and, and talk about the plans. I know we've been here a long time tonight, so no sense belaboring it. I'm sure, as I watch all of the, the town television shows, that you watch the Z B A, so, um, I'm sure you're aware of all the concerns. So I'm sure you're aware of all the concerns and what we did, and what went on, so I don't want to repeat it if, if I don't have to.
Right, and understanding that the Z B A decision has not been rendered at this point, we'll be mindful of that. This is our opening hearing here, so absolutely, we'll have an opportunity, because we just received information literally yesterday ourselves, so...
We're, we're aware of that, Mr. Chapman, and, and we fully understand and expected that.
Mr. Healy?
Thank you.
For the record, I'm Patrick Healy, I'm an engineer with Thompson Liston Associates. So we have presented a, a pretty comprehensive site plan to the board for your consideration. On the cover sheet here, we have the locust map, this is showing where the property is located relative to Route Nine and South Street, it's on the northwest corner, and it does back up to some residential property and be, uh, along Brentwood Drive. And then we're directly across the street from Price Chopper, if you're familiar with that intersection. There's also a, a multifamily residential project across the street called, um, Maplewood, I believe. So we've presented you with a, a survey plan showing that we do have some challenging topography on the site. There's about an eighty foot grade difference across the site from South Street to the High Point. In fact, we have about a fifty foot grade difference, just in the part of the site we're developing. As Mr. Ricker said, we're developing only less than fourteen acres of the overall twenty-five acre site. So the first, first plan that I'm showing in the set is to show the overall property and how the parking and building is laid out within that. So, uh, this is, uh, South Street over here and Route Nine, the building sited, um, in such a way that it's sort of parallel to the contour, so the building itself is located primarily, um, right along that cut fill line. So everything in this direction is essentially fill, other than the driveway, and everything on this side of the building is cut. So, um, this parking lot would be sort of terraced into the hill, so there'll be two le, two levels of parking in the rear of the building, primarily for employee parking and inventory, and then in the front of the building, there's three terraces coming down lower than the building towards South Street, first for customer parking, for inventory, and then there's some display spaces that are proposed along, uh, both the entrance from South Street and the entrance from Route Nine, that are located in areas where, um, in, in order not to maximize the impervious cover, we're proposing some of those display spaces to have, um, a pervious, uh, grass surface that's structurally sound, impervious, so we're not getting additional runoff. These are all new vehicles that would be displayed, so we don't have any concerns about, um, you know, hazardous materials or anything like that. The next plan in the set is more of a, a close up view, just showing where the improvements are proposed. So, this is showing a, a count of parking, of six hundred total vehicles exterior to the building. Four hundred eighteen of those are inventory, as I said, they're primarily at the upper level here, and in the lower level in the front. There are twenty-six spaces that are proposed as display spaces, right here as you enter from Route Nine, and there's a couple select spaces as we come up the hill from South Street into the site. So we have set aside seventy-seven, uh, parking spaces for employees, eighteen spaces for the sales showroom for customers, and sixty-one spaces for the service component. There are two signs proposed on the property. So there's a large pylon sign that's proposed along Route Nine, and then there's a ground mounted, what we call a monument sign, proposed along South Street for wayfinding, so people can see the tall sign along Route Nine from both directions. Essentially, our entrance will be at the crest of the hill along Route Nine, so we'll have good visibility of that sign. The signs comply in their entirety with the, uh, town zoning bylaw. Based upon the large frontage that's available on the site, we would be allowed to construct three thousand two hundred ninety-six square feet of signs, and we're proposing just under four hundred square feet. So, they're visible, they're large enough to be seen, but they're not overwhelming, or certainly not, you know, an intrusion into people driving by.
Lit as well, or is it not lit?
Uh, both of the signs are proposed to be internally lit. So there wouldn't be glare from spotlights or anything like that. So the monument sign is located, um, right, right along the frontage here, next to the entrance drive, I'm sorry, the pylon sign, and the monument sign is located down here at the, uh, South Street driveway. So we've evaluated the truck routes through the property, both for the car delivery vehicle and for fire and emergency vehicles, so we're providing access both from South Street and from Route Nine. That's, um, an appropriate grade curvature and site distance for the vehicles to have the ability to come in, come around here, unload, and go back out, or vice versa. Fire trucks could enter from either of the entrances and reach all the way around the building. So the parts component, um, of the, of the motor vehicle use is at this end of the building. We do have room for the parts truck to deliver to this end of the vehicle, uh, to the building, and then drive back out to Route Nine. So we've provided a cross section view through the property, showing how the, how the parking is terraced here at the High Point behind the building, down to a second terrace, down to the floor level, and then two additional terraces going down towards South Street. This is our grading plan, um, the overall grading plan. There will be quite a bit of material that needs to be exported from the property in order to create these terraces. We are building two large retaining walls down on this side of the site, where we're proposing fill. At its largest point, we're proposing twenty-six feet of fill, and then on the uphill side of the, uh, building behind here, there is quite a tall slope being created as we excavate into the hill, and at its highest excavation depth, that's about thirty-eight feet, so we bring the existing grade third, down thirty-eight feet, and then we build a slope going back up behind those, uh, inventory spaces. So, again, this is a closer view, so the dark lines that you see are retaining walls around here. There's also a wall here along Route Nine, where if you've driven by here, you know there's an existing retaining wall, and the grade goes up quite a bit. Well, by excavating the building pad and this truck route coming in, in this direction, we actually need to bring that grade down, so where it's currently going up from Route Nine, it'll end up being, the driveway will be below Route Nine, so there'll be a retaining wall along here that goes from about two feet to ten feet along the frontage there. So these hatched areas are showing the grass display areas I was describing, um, here along the front as you enter the site, there's some featured display areas, and there's a small area down here where you enter from South Street, that wasn't on my original plan in a, in a, in a hatch. It was on the revised plan that I submitted to the board. So in, in developing this property, you know, altering fourteen acres of land, we're creating over six acres of impervious area, we need to manage the runoff from that. So, we're doing that in several ways, we're taking all of the roof runoff from the building, which is about fifty, uh, forty-seven thousand square feet, and we're putting that into three infiltration areas, one at this end of the building, one at this end of the building, and one down here. These are areas where, as I said, the building's designed to be along that cut fill, uh, line. These are situated such that they can be a natural grade, and then have fill placed over them, in this case, or be on natural grade in these two locations. So we're building a, uh, underground chamber system with a lot of crushed stone and chambers, in order to allow the roof runoff that's considered clean to be infiltrated directly to the ground. And then we have two stormwater basins that we're proposing, one down here near South Street, and one here, also near South Street, because basically our entire hill is going down in that direction. So we need to manage the stormwater at, at the lowest part of the development. I'd just like to go back to the other page to look at the, the drainage patterns. So, uh, Brentwood Drive up here is pretty much at the crest of the hill, this all slopes down toward Route Nine, down towards South Street, um, this sort of a ridge along here, where Brentwood Drive, the lots were built, and there's sort of a, a remaining ridge right along the property line. This area all runs down to a low point here, near Brentwood Drive, there's a couple of culverts that go under that roadway into the, uh, the broad wetland right along South Street. So we need to reduce our peak rate of flow, and we're doing that primarily with this basin to handle the upper part of the, uh, site, and this basin near South Street to handle the lower part. The lower basin, uh, near South Street here also has some benefit of infiltration due to the soil types that, that we're in. This sort of a divide between soil types here, where this is all glacial till up on top of the hill, but we have about a two hundred foot strip of land here along South Street that's primarily sand and loamy sand, so it does give us the, the opportunity to infiltrate a lot of that runoff, so there's no increase in volume or the peak rate of runoff, and we're fully compliant with the D E P's stormwater, uh, standards. A question came up at one of the hearings about whether ledge blasting was required, because we are doing quite a bit of excavation on the site. It's likely there will be some blasting up near, nearest Route Nine, where the entrance is brought in here. We did some extensive geotechnical borings and soil testing on the site. This is the only area where the hardest material, uh, it may or may not be rock, but it had a very high blow count, so you count, when, when the, uh, drill rig is being, uh, extended into the property, into the ground, they use a hammer to count the blow counts. So if you're in sandy soil, the blow counts are only one or two hammers per foot. In this area, it was over fifty, uh, the blow count was fifty, so it's either very dense glacial till, it's boulders, or there's a chance that there could be some ledge in that area. The blasting, uh, as, as the board is aware, is controlled by the fire department through the regulations of the state fire marshal. The, the requirements are, if any blasting is being done within two hundred and fifty feet of another building or residence, those residents have to be afforded the opportunity to have a pre-blast survey paid for by the proponent. Any cracks or, uh, misalignments in the buildings would be identified before the blast, and then it would be reviewed again after, after any blasting that's done. There's also a limit to, um, I forget the, 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 uh, the statistics that are used, but the vibrations can't exceed a certain level as they cross the property line, and these things are highly regulated, and the, the fire department is typically, typically on site if any blasting is done. We've also presented a comprehensive erosion and sediment control, uh, plan, uh, sequence of work. We've described all the measures and how they have to be implemented. Because we are moving a lot of earth, we know there's glacial till, it will be very important that the erosion control, uh, and sedimentation control be handled by a qualified contractor. Our, our clients have identified... Our clients have identified a contractor. We've been working with them in the sequencing and developing the volumes of removal. So at this point in time, we believe the hundred thousand cubic yards of material must be removed from the site. We're expecting that to be done from the Route nine entrance, not over the South Street entrance or into the intersection. It'll be important to phase the project first to build sedimentation controls at the bottom of the site, and then to remove the fill from the high part here and to place some of it such that it's suitable to be placed as fill under the parking areas. They may have to import some material, you know, if the fines are too high and it can't be compacted, or if there's any clay in the material, it can't be used for fill. We don't have enough information to know what portion of it has to be imported at this point, but we expect that there will be some portion of it imported. We have presented a landscaping plan to the board for your consideration that shows a number of trees being planted, vegetation on the slopes, decorative shrubbery, and landscaping along the front entrance and along the frontage with both of the entrance drives. I'm sorry, I don't have a colored exhibit tissue. It's typically the one that I have colored up for presentation. Then we have a planting schedule, we have construction details. I don't think we need to get into that too much. Then after we have initially filed the plan with the board, we had some input from the building department about setbacks that are required for parking spaces. We actually requested an additional variance from the zoning board of appeals for the display spaces that are proposed within the front yard setbacks at both of the entrances. So as the board is aware, you can build a parking lot with a landscape strip ten feet away from the property line, but the display spaces were considered part of the sales use and were required to meet the setback unless we're able to get that relief from the zoning board of appeals. So we did submit a supplemental revised plan to the board, including dimensions to various things along the frontage. There was a slight increase in the building footprint from what was originally proposed. The numbers that we gave you tonight, the fifty-seven thousand square feet and the forty-seven reflect the updated building footprint. So on the same revised plan, I did hatch all of the display spaces so they show up in a similar fashion, so there was no confusion about where those were located. I don't know, Mr. Chair, you'll read into the record, but we did receive peer review from Graves Engineering. We're in the process of addressing those. I probably have ninety-five percent of those issues addressed at this point, but I'm waiting to see if through the public hearings or the boards have any input and additional suggestions that we can incorporate into our revised set that we'll send back to Graves, and we should have before your next meeting. Thank you. Be happy to take any questions.
And before I finish the initial presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't note that we were in front of the select board as well, and we did receive the license approval for this location from the select board. As you can see, this was an eight-and-a-half million dollar land purchase. You can imagine there's an initial investment and there's additional investment obviously going into this. I'm proud to say that this is good for our commercial tax base. This is something that I think is appropriately located, and it will be good for our tax base. We're not bringing any children into the schools, we're adding money to the tax base. It's a large investment. Subaru of New England has a good history. They want to be a good neighbor. They try always to be a good neighbor. And if you have any questions for us, we'd be pleased to answer them. I don't know if you want to hear from our traffic engineer relative to some of the comments that she is able to make about the MDM report. That's up to you.
Mr. Chair, we do have our peer reviewer from MDM here as well, if you would like to hear from.
So if you would, please.
Sure. So since the time of our original traffic study submission, we have now received the peer review comments, and we have done some additional data collection, which we're incorporating into the report, additional data that we were obtaining, and then also we'll address the peer review comments. The first comment I'd like to go over was about the accidents and crash data and the RSA that MDM had completed. We had included the typical five-year crash data that we look at from the MAST DOT crash portal, with there being a documented road safety audit at the signalized intersection. We could certainly look into additional crashes from the most recent couple of years and incorporate that into the report, but being that there's a documented road safety audit at this location, just not sure, overall, adding to the report if it would overall change anything that we have already documented in the report based on our own crash review and the road safety audit that's been documented. If the planning board would like to see that, we would consider adding that.
So just for clarity, so you're asking if we would like to have additional crash data, recent crash data that's not part of this?
Yeah, the MAST DOT portal, they consider, I think it's a year after the year has closed for crashes to be reported as final, so the typical period is not up to 2021 or 2022. It goes back a little further.
Since you asked so nicely, I'm going to answer nicely. Yes, I'd like to have the most recent information.
And then following up on the RSA that was completed, we do still have a MAST DOT access permit process to go through. Obviously, there's the opening on Route nine. Any improvements that we could potentially pursue from the RSA would require MAST DOT approval and not being able to commit to any specific improvements at this time, just with it having to go through MAST DOT would be our response to that. We did get additional vehicle speeds on Route nine. That'll be added to the report, including the measured site distances for the site driveways. And as Richard had mentioned at the last zoning board meeting, we did make note that the South Street entrance would be modified to a right-in, right-out, so we would update to show the site distances relative to the movements that would be on the updated site plan. For the traffic growth, we looked into the developments that were mentioned, and we are working to update the traffic report based on the Centec development. I believe the other ones did not have available information on trips or were able to be assumed covered in the one percent growth rate that we had already included in our traffic production model.
I would mention that I had a question about whether we needed to get that or about the Edgemere drive-in, the market basket development, seeing as it's quite a bit distance away from this location and kind of remote from this location.
I think that one was from a neighborhood comment specifically, but yeah.
Seems a bit of a stretch.
It is, it is.
What's the impact of this particular project?
Yes, yeah.
I believe there's two more comments relative to the traffic. So the trip distribution, again, asking for the South Street entrance be reviewed for modifications, and we agreed for a right-in, right-out driveway on South Street. And then the operational analysis, we would be updating the report based on the trip reassignment for the South Street entrance, as well as the additional site-specific growth from the Centec development. That will all be incorporated into the updated report.
And we also have some specific counts relative to Patrick itself.
Yes, we follow ITE for the traffic impact studies. It's Institute of Transportation Engineers. They are a national research organization that compile trip generation info for various land uses across the country. The land use for this site that we use was land use code eight forty for a new auto sales and service center. It is a planning tool, and there are cases where local data of either when the land use code doesn't reflect exactly what the proposed land use would be, or the trips do not seem to match local conditions. We did obtain additional counts at the Patrick Subaru site, and adjusting relative to the difference in building size between that site and the proposed site, we do have additional information that will be added to the report relative to those trips. They are significantly less than what ITE was showing, approximately about half, generally speaking.
While we're on traffic.
Yes.
I'd like to ask if we could have the peer reviewer speak to this document that we just received that we have not had any time to digest, so if you can give us an overview of what his findings are.
Great. Thank you, Chair and board members, for your record.
My name is Robert Muscho. I'm the managing principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. We're based in Marlboro. We've got a long and successful history doing projects in Shrewsbury and working with this board, and we've had the opportunity to look at this particular site. Contextually, our firm was involved with the Price Chopper project, and we're the designer of record for the intersection at Route nine, right, and the improvements that were made in two thousand and eight. As Maureen had pointed out, we've also prepared a road safety audit, which was really an outcome of the Centec Park North study that we conducted working on behalf of the town. So we've got a lot of this information that we think is appropriate as a backstop or backdrop, if you will, to what's been prepared. The general finding is that the studies were done professionally. They follow good industry practices. We have no issues with that. But given the amount of information that's been published in other recent studies, not only from Centec Park North, but also from the Forty-B project on Chestnut Street, for instance, that was just done very recently, there's a lot of information that we want to make sure is consistently presented in this study, and that speaks to the background growth assumptions, for instance. In the end analysis, we don't really anticipate that additional adjustment to the analysis is going to present an earth-shattering difference in results, but we think it's appropriate for consistency to include those, right? So any vacancies within the UMass campus on South Street, any vacancies in the Charles River Lab facilities, for instance, and making sure that we properly account for the current development scenario at Centec Park North. Those are the three big ones we want to make sure get covered. Most importantly, I think, road safety is always top of my mind, and I know that there's been a recent fatality at this intersection, it's very sad to say. I saw that there's some displaced guardrail in the northwest corner of the intersection, very high-speed crash, and I think it is appropriate that the crash data be updated to reflect and understand the causal factors behind that, so that if there's something that can be done to address that, whether near-term or long-term, either, that it be addressed somehow. So that's really the basis of our commentary on safety. I will point out that, and the applicant correctly points out, they'll need an access permit from DOT. And during that process, it would be beneficial to review those elements of the road safety audit that have not yet been implemented that would make sense to implement, many of which are not heavy lifts, frankly. For instance, the pavement markings, which were last done in two thousand and eight, have faded, or, you know, they're just not visible. The dual left from southbound South Street, the skip lines that direct you to the lanes on Route nine, aren't there anymore. The bicycle markings, which are placed over the detection units for the signal, aren't there anymore. You know, obviously, the guardrail, which was recently damaged, needs to be fixed, replaced. Those types of elements, which are very clearly articulated in the road safety audit, where that have recently been an issue, should really just be revisited during that process, and it wouldn't be extraordinary for an applicant to advance those improvements for a project like this. So we would advise it be appropriate to have that conversation with DOT and for the board to consider that as a potential condition. Beyond that, the driveway has been, you know, number-one issue in terms of potential impact to the neighborhood or to the general traveling public. As the designer of record for that intersection, we are keenly aware of some of the difficulties that that southbound side of South Street has experienced over the years. Prior to the improvements, it was not unusual to have a higher level of crashes in the intersection because of the misalignment of South Street approaches, the lack of a second left-turn lane, et cetera. That largely got addressed in two thousand and eight, but here we are in two thousand and twenty-two. It's not uncommon to see a vehicle queue extend all the way from Route nine past the Price Chopper driveway. And to validate that, we actually did video recordings of that using MyoVision equipment, and sure enough, particularly in the mornings and Saturday mid-days, you could see that happen. As growth like occupancy of UMass campus, Charles River Labs, Centec North happens, that queue is likely to grow over time, unfortunately. So I'm pleased to know that the applicant has considered a right-in, right-out driveway design. We think that's appropriate. I would caution that the design of that driveway is critical because you don't want to create a design that still allows for, perhaps with difficulty, but still allows for a left turn, either in or out. And there are ways to design around that, but that has to be a careful consideration. And as it relates to commercial vehicle access of that driveway, I would only question whether or not an auto car carrier really needs to use that section of South Street to get to the property. It just seemed to me to be a less than efficient way to get to the top of the hill, and that it would be most appropriately oriented toward the Route nine driveway, as any of the other commercial businesses experience, including auto dealerships along this section of Route nine. Certainly, the driveway would need to be designed so that a fire apparatus could get up there quickly. You'd want to have that happen, but I would really sincerely question the need for anything other than that type of larger vehicle to use that driveway. I would discourage it, actually. And let's see. That hit most of the highlights. There were some general site plan-related comments, some of which simply augment what Graves Engineering has already pointed out in a couple of areas. The most important from our perspective is the road profile for the driveway on South Street. It was hard to discern what the actual grades were on that based on the information presented. As detailed as it was, it would be appropriate to have a profile provided for that driveway so that we understood the grading aspects along its entire length, but most particularly where it meets South Street. You want to make sure that there's what's known as a level landing area within about a hundred feet or so of the intersection. If you're coming down at grade, we're in New England, you want to make sure that you have appropriate feathering of the driveway so that as you're approaching South Street, there's no potential for a vehicle to slide into the roadway under slippery or slick conditions. So we would advise that the profile be provided, that a level landing area be provided within about a hundred feet or so of the intersection, and that that be clearly shown. In addition, from the pedestrian maneuver, accommodation perspective, we want to make sure that all of the connections to the proposed sidewalk that runs along South Street into the property and within the property itself is designed in a way that it has ADA-compliant features to it, appropriate access ramps at locations within the property itself, that any crossings be ADA-compliant as well, and that would cover that feature. I did note that Graves properly commented that there should be a connection of the sidewalk from the site side to the east side of South Street. The challenge there will be making sure that that is placed in a location that is not in conflict with the left-turn lane going into Price Chopper, right? There's a certain area where that might have to extend to, and depending on ultimately where that crossing is located, may require mid-block crossing control, if you will, so that any crossings that do occur would be subject to high visibility and safety. so that any crossings that do occur would be subject to high visibility and safety. And the aprons of the driveways themselves should also be designed to ADA compliance with appropriate crossings. As it relates to the Route Nine driveway, that will be subject to D O T review and approval. They do rigorous review. I have not commented on XL, DCL lanes, lane transition or anything that would be associated with that D O T process, and I'm going to defer to them on their review of those design elements. And this is a favorite of mine. I'd love to see E V charging stations on the site. As someone who drives an electric car, you know, I think it's a wonderful feature to have, and it's common to plan and review processes to see those types of design elements included in a project, including a project like this. So we would encourage that, though I'm not sure that it would be something that is necessarily under requirement per se, but it certainly would be a nice feature. I think that about does it. The only other comment, sorry, would have to do with auto turn analysis for vehicle maneuverability. The site plan does show an auto car carrier swept path movement. I think that has been addressed in the right-in, right-out commitment by the client on the South Street side. I believe it works properly on the Route Nine side. What I did not see in the site plan set that I had was the fire apparatus, making sure that that apparatus can fully circle the building. So we want to make sure that that's done. And secondly, that the looting area for the facility, which could accommodate larger design vehicle, that that be tested as well. You don't want to be left with a situation where bringing in spare tires is going to be a problem. Probably won't be, but it hasn't been modeled in the material that we've seen, so we would request that that be done. And that's about it. Any questions from the board?
Does anyone from the board have a question?
A good question. On the Route Nine right-in, right-out, as you properly said, that's going to be reviewed by Mass Dot, and therefore that's not that much of a concern for me. On the South Street right-in, right-out, I'm assuming that's not going to be, since it's not a state highway, it's probably some local approval, and that's where I think the design in terms of not absolutely making sure that somebody won't take a very difficult left turn there is important. Mass duty process is very thorough, and I have seen those in the past, and they'll make sure that that happens there, you know? So but on the South Street, oh, is it the Shrewsbury?
It would be Pollock Works ultimately, that does approve that.
That's a compliment.
Yeah, so there's something that the town has to keep that in mind, and you folks have to design it appropriately.
Yeah, I would concur with that, and I emphasize it because our firm has designed features for right-in, right-out that are very physically prohibitive for those. If they're not designed to be restrictive enough, it actually creates a problem. And so we would advise that, you know, the redesign of that be reviewed for the comment.
Yeah. The second question I have on the big delivery trucks, car delivery trucks, is like, let's say if it's, again, I don't know if you will answer or you, you know, heading east on Route Nine, if they have to deliver to Subaru, would they take left at that intersection or not head east at all on Route Nine?
It should be coming from four ninety-five going west, and would enter onto Route Nine.
Okay, so hey, you'll be heading Route Nine west, then northeast. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, we don't envision any carriers coming from the other direction.
Yeah, my worry is like, maybe somebody may be coming from Route Twenty, and then take a South Street, and then come here and realize that they can't take left turn, you know? So it's something internally you have to provide some ways for those folks not to get into a situation of having to try to make a hard left turn, you know?
If we could just address the delivery trucks, because they're very different than other automobile dealerships in that respect.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Michael Clumey. I have great pleasure, very excited to be here in front of this board this evening. I myself personally chased this land for three and a half years. Two brothers and a sister owned it, and the Patrick family goes up there and taught unbelievable dealers for the Subaru New England franchise, well, their franchise, where the distributorship. Mr. Bach is the owner of the distributorship. Every Subaru in New England you see, we sell. Mr. Bach's responsible. Brian and I work for Mr. Bach. It's a family-owned business. You work for Ernie Bach, it's like a family. I am his brother-in-law. He treats all employees. You go there, you don't leave. He takes a lot of pride in what he does and how we work with our dealers. And Patrick Family is an outstanding dealer for us in every capacity you could ever imagine, taking care of customers, being good neighbors, being good to the community. And so we went out, and they've outgrown their facility. And so they'll come to us and ask us, Ernie, can you help us find a facility? So myself went out there with my team. We went up and down Route Nine for three, four years. I finally found this piece of property, going on many pieces of property, and it was very nice. And so it took me a lot, and these two brothers and a sister own it, approximately three and a half years to purchase it. We finally got it done with the permission of the Patrick family, working in conjunction with them to move their facility here. So it's successful in purchasing. We know contingencies at all, but in today's day and world, it's very dangerous. So we bought the piece of property, hoping to hire a team, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Richter here, and Maureen here, to be successful in front of this board and be successful throughout Shrewsbury with all your boards and all your procedures. And with that said, we go out and we treat this like it's ours, like we live there, and the Patrick Family's done a good job. And they've had a couple complaints up there because they've outgrown their facility. So we like to meet with the neighbors. We went to the zoning board, and we made a mistake. We didn't meet with the neighbors first. And so we had fifty-five people on the microphone talking all about it, and that was my fault. And I had talked to my attorney if we could do that. We didn't do that. I was completely mistaken, and that's my fault. I'm not going to blame anyone else. It was my fault. So we went, we took it to the zoning board, then we went further, and we met with the neighbors. And we talked about lights. And I've done over thirty of these dealerships throughout New England on Route Nine in Auto Mile. Right now, I'm building a fifty-six thousand square foot dealership in Milford, Connecticut. Once again, my track record speaks for itself. And so since we bought the property and we tried to put the team together, Mr. Bach's phone's blowing up, going, hey, Ernie, do you want to sell this? I can put a shopping plaza, twenty-five acres. Hey, Ernie, do you want to sell it? I can put condos. Hey, Ernie, put forty Vs. I would say a little early, Dawn, I love dirt, I love land, and what you have in front of you, God bless you, I'm making a decision on that last one. We're not looking to sell the land to anyone else besides the Patrick Family and build a Subaru dealership and be a good neighbor, community person, community company. So we met with the neighbors, and we talked about the lights. The way I do it is, you usually have a row of lights in the back, and you have ten of them. You have one circuit breaker, all ten go off. I wire each one individually. And so if there is one, and all will be dark sky, it will be dark sky on all the property. No looms will leave our property bothering any neighbors. When a neighbor happens to be sitting in their living room or their kitchen or TV, they says, that one light just bothers me. Just call us up, I'll go over, I'll shut that one off. After an hour after we close, if another one bothers you, we'll shut that off and put another one on. We keep only one-third of the lights on after an hour after closing, because we just need it for safety and security, as the attorney has spoken. But we don't want to keep them all on. This nuisance costs a lot of money. So the lights, we address the lights. Intercoms, we don't put any intercoms in. When they're loud speakers, hey, Joey, line two, come get your customer. We're not interested in that. We keep it cell phones. That way they have trash pickup. We control all the trash pickup. You know, you have companies go ahead, the dumpster pickup, five o'clock in the morning, beep, beep, beep. No trash pickup till after seven-thirty. We always do that everywhere we go. We've talked to the neighbors and told them we'd do the same here. Anything after seven-thirty, trash gets picked up. Anything before, we don't want that trash company. All the trash trucks, and all the trucks will leave off Route Nine. We hire them, we can control where they go. We don't have a problem putting that in the order of conditions and the approval. The test drives, do you already have a strict test drive? Test drive policy in their company, and they will continue that and not have test drives in the neighborhoods, not on South Street. They'll all go on Route Nine, and they'll have a certain patent to go. They have a very strict policy today with that. With the trucks, it's a great point. With Subaru New England as a distributor, we own all our own trucks. We have fifteen trucks, brand new. I'm actually responsible for buying them. They're Peterbilt's. After three hundred thousand miles, we turn them in. They don't leak, they're not loud, they're state-of-the-art trucks. The drivers have been with us for over twenty-five, thirty years. You work for us, you don't leave. We really take care of the employees. Ernie does a great job with that. So we dictate when the trucks are going to come, when the trucks are going to leave, where they go, where the route is. And right now, going there on Patrick Subaru is a little difficult, unloading there. We'll have a loading in the back, no one will hear it. It won't be at night, at two in the morning, it won't be when they close. They have to be open to receive the cars. So the car carriers are very important to us, and so we do our own. You see the other manufacturers, and we've had the Toyota and Honda dealerships, and they come and go when they want, they leak, and they're loud, and they're broken down. We don't have that issue because we own them, and we control them. Cars being dropped off, that's the car carriers. The buffer zone, we did meet with the neighbors, and one of the concerns was, on the retention pond on the right, which I didn't pick up, adjacent to South Street, the Maplewood residence said, geez, you've cut all the trees down right to the street. And we said, hey, Jesus, sorry. Went back to Patrick, he's going to shuffle that back, going to give him twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty?
Twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty to twenty-five buffer zone, because if I lived there, I would want to think about it. I don't want to look at all the trees cut down. So we moved it all back, and so we're going to have a nice buffer zone between the neighbors, South Street, and the retention pond. And even after the retention pond, we have more trees between the retention pond and the building. Correct? Buffer zone streets, the blasting, as Patrick addressed. Is there any blasting? We'll go ahead to the fire department and take all the procedures, and anyone wants their house videotaped, and if it's cracked out, that's our responsibility with the blasting company. We'll take full, you know, responsibility for that. We met with the neighbors before we got the report. We got the report Tuesday, and, well, we got a little clips on Monday night, the twenty-eighth, but we had met the neighbors before, and the neighbors were really concerned, and some of the things were like, the biggest thing was no left in, no left out. And we heard all kinds of, you know, stories and bad things. And so we went back as a team, and before we got the report, and said, you know, we should stop the left in and the left out. And so we've taken that out on our own before we got the report. We want to do the right thing by the neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor. After the neighbors, there was a crosswalk too that someone had mentioned, and I'm not sure, quite sure where that was. So we're looking for the crosswalk. Is that correct? They're going across. Lights, E V chargers, E V chargers, we sell at E V chargers, coming out right out. So there will be E V chargers on the site. And one thing that we didn't do was, it was a fence, one of the neighbors is three hundred and thirty feet from the building to the back of the property line. So we didn't feel a fence needed. I had to cut trees down three hundred and thirty feet to put a fence in. That's one thing we couldn't do for the neighbors. So we listened to the neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor. We're very, very excited to be in front of this board, in front of this town, and have the opportunity for the Patrick Family to have a new facility, and appreciate your time very much. So thank you.
Thank you for letting him digress from your question.
Yeah. This piece of property is very important. We bought it for one reason, one reason only, to put Patrick Subaru there. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, Travis? Mr. Jerry?
This gentleman just answered all my questions.
He'll give you his cell phone number, too. He's been doing that.
The Patrick Family's been there fifty years, they want to be another fifty, Jason, another fifty, maybe a hundred.
Jason's third generation.
Third generation.
I'm going to digest the traffic.
Mr. Thomas?
Want to be a good neighbor, we got to figure something out on South Street.
Yep.
Simple as that.
No, we will.
Yeah. As this progresses, we got to figure something.
Absolutely. We are listening to the neighbors. We'll do, we'll work, we'll work with the board, whatever it needs to be a good neighbor.
And we are aware of the physical barrier type of thing that this gentleman, Mr. Mashad was talking about. Patrick has been working on that, so we'll be back to you with that.
Okay. So I just got a couple of comments. Obviously, I'm in the same boat as everyone else in this community. I am frequent at Price Chopper, so I understand that intersection probably as well as all these people inside here are experienced. It is a difficult corner, there's no question about it. So my initial view of where I saw this driveway coming in directly across made absolutely no sense to me, so I just wanted to throw it out there, it makes absolutely no sense. However.
Traffic engineer did that.
However, coming up with a design to have right-in, right-out only, and to the point of the peer reviewer, making it so that it's, because I've seen people be idiots, okay? They will do what they want to do, right? So we've got to be very mindful of that. If you are really bent on having the South Street entrance, if you chose to not, I would appreciate that, because I think that would be one less thing to have to worry about for, listen to my reasons, because now you have a signalized light that is going to control a lot of the traffic flow in and out of that site. So I understand your comments that you made at Z B A of it being a safety issue and things of that nature, but that logic, if that was held true throughout all of Route Nine, half the businesses would have to close, because they wouldn't have the opportunity to have the same set of circumstances that you currently have, okay?
But in all fairness, we have the opportunity to address that.
Point well taken. But I just look at that as, that by far and away is the biggest lynchpin for me, okay? I do have a couple other comments that I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of for the future meetings, is your retaining walls. We know that we're going to have a retaining wall study that's going to be peer reviewed, as well as the slope.
On the retaining walls, those will be all designed with licensed engineer, structural engineer, and they'll be stamped.
They have to be.
They have to be.
Right. We've recently experienced a lot of problems with retaining walls, so we're being a little bit more forthcoming with making sure that you're aware that.
We know they're subject to separate permits and separate reviews.
And where you have some of the retaining walls that have somewhere up which of ten or more feet drop, I'm asking this as a question because I couldn't see it on the plane. Are there going to be fencing in front of, what are you going to do preventing either cars from going over or people from going over? So it's a safety concern that I have on that, okay? So something to think about.
Something for him to address, yeah.
And I'd like to see if we can come up with a plan when the right-in, right-out on South Street, if that is the direction you're going, that we do something to prevent commercial traffic from using that. So if it means designing the driveway such that a commercial vehicle could not go up there, that might be one avenue to do. But I think you've got to balance that based on what we have for current passenger vehicles that would, that you would consider using that, right? So what we're trying to do here, in my view, for me, is I want to limit as much commercial traffic flow coming down South Street as we can, okay? And if we make that right-in, right-out, safe, as safe as possible, with the greatest ability to limit size of vehicle to want to try to use it, I think that's, that would be an advantage. It's just a view. Yes, sorry.
With that said, as we control every truck that goes on the site, and I've talked to Jason about that, who's the owner, and if they do, they won't do business with us.
Very good. Well, I will say this.
If they do business, we control the trash, the parts, the tractor trailer, as everyone can say. But actually, we're willing to work with you to make it a safe, because we want to have a safe intersection also. And we've already listened to the neighbors, and so we're already giving up the no left, no left. And if you want us to design that, we're all ears. I've got my civil engineer here tonight, and we're good.
The only other thing is, and you mentioned this, I think, in part of your comments, that, you know, Patrick is outgrowing their current space, and that there were complaints in the past. And I can tell you that although you're controlling the trucks, you may not have been controlling the trucks at the time, that these complaints came before us, but we've had meetings where residents in that area had issues. And I drive, literally drive by there six A M. every day, and I've personally witnessed car carriers there waiting for the place to open. And I just want to just put on the record that Patrick Subaru in the Route Nine area down by, I guess we'll call it South Shrewsbury, would be, has already experienced issues with deliveries, okay? In the past.
That's why we're moving, and we're very sorry for that. Very sorry, that's why we're going to move in under this new facility.
Okay. And other than that, I do, would look forward to whatever redesign is going to happen on the South Street side and the follow-up with the peer review. Again, a lot of this information just recently came to us, so for the public, we have not had time to really digest this, so please be kind when I open it up for public comment, okay? There's a lot of new information that just came about. This hearing will be continued, so I just ask that you've heard some of the questions that came from the board, some of the responses. It may not address your question completely, but hopefully it addresses some of them, because I really don't want to have this thing linger on. And also, if, when I open it up for public comment, I don't want to hear fifteen people say the same thing. If somebody's already said something of a concern, even slightly tied to it, I'd appreciate, understand that we were hearing you, okay? With that being said.
The only thing I would add is that they're not looking for a special permit. This isn't allowed use in this zone. This is site plan approval. So the operative word is approve with conditions. Now we're talking about what conditions that we're gonna, how we're gonna condition this site with.
Thank you. Okay. With that being said, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Allow me to go first. John Schrammali, thirty-eight, Nolton Ave. A quick comment and a quick question. Comment, I worked in Southwell for many years, and I know coming home in the summertime on Route Nine, traffic goes very slow. And when you turn right on South Street, it is wonderful to drive in a couple hundred yards of shade. I wonder if you folks are gonna keep in consideration trying to retain some trees so late in the afternoon, some shade stays on South Street. That is, it might sound like a subtle thing, but it, it, I think, I think it's, it's worth mentioning. So I pass that along as a comment, or question, or whatever. The only other comment I wanted to make was hearing about the right in and right out on South Street. I'll just put this to the board. Might it make sense to consider only a right in from South Street in direct traffic to only exit onto Route Nine? I know that eliminates the ability of people to go left on Route Nine at South Street to Route Nine, but the turnaround at Route one forty is just up ahead, and that infrastructure is already there. Just a, just a suggestion I toss along to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, I saw it on the other hand. Yes, sir.
My name is Martin Lee. I live at one forty South Street. So we moved to Shrewsbury probably in early nineteen nineties, and witnessed South Street from dirt road to the current busy paved road. And I have two major concerns. One is the water resource. And, you know, in the past, South Street had underground well. That well went dry. So right now, on that street, the water is very, water pressure is very low. So I know the new car dealership cannot be operated without a lot of water. So customer won't buy the sparkling, shiny new cars. So I understand that. But the natural resource on South Street is very, very limited. So, and in the future, probably you guys will deal with the water issue, I mean, later, I mean, if the dealership is open there. Secondly, the traffic, traffic in general, so since the new supermarket opened across the street of their parcel, so that intersection is very busy during the daytime. On average, probably over fifteen cars waiting for the red light. And if you want to make, go straight or turn left, probably you have to wait for two cycles. And on the north side of the South Street, basically, that's a, if you from Route Nine, basically, in town refer to, from Main Street to Route Nine is the north side of South Street. So it's a lot of residential buildings. So most of the section is the speed limit is thirty miles per hour. It's a sickly settled area. But people drive on the road, probably on average, it's a forty miles to forty-five miles. You can verify there is a speed sensor there on the street. So you, you can look at the, the bar to see how people drive. So that causes a lot of traffic accidents. So I know in the past few years, the utility pole outside my house was hit and broken by cars three times. This data probably can verify from police department, utility department, public utility department. And also, the postbox, the, the steel, in the past, I have a probably three-inch diameter steel pipe underground for my postbox near the street. That one was hit by a car and bended, rooted out from the ground. So I have to move that postbox, I mean, in, inside, away from the, the road. This does not count the utility poles broken by vehicles on the other side of the road. I remember probably last year, one utility pole was hit and broken in the intersection of Lamp lighter and South Street, in that intersection. So this is a serious issues. So every time I hear the big bang on the street, day and night, I have to go out, take a look, see if someone is seriously injured. Sometimes in winter, it's a subzero temperature, you know, come out from warm house to walk on the street to check. So right now, I think the South Street is, which is a limit for the traffic. If a new car, new car dealership, I mean, is open there. Subaru, I know, most sell the family cars, but they do have performance cars. I don't know the special model, but there's a big R intake in the front, and two exhaust pipe in the back is a RST or something like the model.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too deep into this right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but you know, people want to take test drive before buy cars. You know, so in natural place, they want to go to South Street, Floral Street, there's an elementary school on that street, and also Fox, Fox Farm area.
And I believe the applicant will have a plan for us that specifically outlines where the test drives will only be allowed, that they will control.
Yeah, I know their policy. Even, I mean, so the existing dealership across street, BMW and all the Mercedes. By my own experience, Mercedes may have a representative in the car, so they want you go to a particular route. And BMW doesn't have that, does not have it. And on the westbound side, I, I saw someone crash a brand-new Lexus in the Walmart, McDonald, and Berkshire Bank. That small cycle, it's not on the Route Nine, it's inside there. Yeah.
So I, I get, we get your point.
Hopefully, I mean, the board will consider my concern. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. No, I, I thought you were getting up. Good. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Lapamardo. This is a very fluid process, because a lot of the things that we were prepared to talk about tonight, some of them have already been addressed. I've gutted my remarks. I promise, we're gonna keep it short as much as we can, given the time. I'm, I'm here on behalf of many neighbors. This is not an individual opinion. This is many of the people that are here. If you wanna raise your hand. Yep, those are all of us. So we've taken the time to, you know, be respectful to the project, be respectful of your time. So we did, it'll be a little extended, but we will go quickly. First, I wanna thank the planning board for the opportunity to express the, the significant public safety concerns related to this project. I'm here on behalf of the many neighbors of the Maplewood complex, Maplewood condo complex next to the Price Chopper, in addition to my own neighbors on Brentwood Drive, all of which either abut or surround the applicant's property. This neighborhood group has now spread to South Street and Francis Ave, all of whom have significant concerns about the proposed BACH South Street entrance. Not a big surprise. That's what we've all been talking about. Secondly, due to a very unproductive neighbor meeting with the BACH team on November sixteenth, the neighbors were at, we were asked to just reach one of the formal communications sent to the BACH team. Lastly, we, we have offered multiple alternatives, many of which came up tonight and were completely told no. So we're very, very pleased from all of this discussion about how the concern is shared with you guys as well. I'm just trying to skim through so you guys don't have to hear the same things. So we, we have heard some of the, some of the issues with the existing Subaru dealership as well. Noise complaints, car carriers not being where they belong. But we've already told the BACH team, we support this project, and we want this dealership to succeed. And understand, some of these issues are gonna get resolved once they have a bigger footprint to operate. So we're, we're fine with that. We've already been very transparent, very, very upfront. We, as, we, as, as future neighbors, though, we want this business to be profitable, so that you, they can afford to have well-trained and well-informed employees, so that they can act as good neighbors. What we don't want is for an already dangerous, dangerous intersection to become more dangerous by introducing oppositional traffic flow. It's not the volume that we care about. It's the oppositional traffic flow. In every direction, no matter where you go in that, you're opposing traffic. Even with the right out, right in, it's still a dicey proposition. You could force, you know, that, that lane all the way up to the top of the driveway and make people go right. Alternatively, if that's the outcome, why wouldn't we just put the entrance on the Route Nine in the, in the first place? Everybody's gonna end up there anyways. So we, we're, we're open. We, there's acceptable alter, alternatives here. Let me be clear, we're not traffic engineers at all. So luckily, the, you know, the BACH study and the MDM peer review has given us good information to work with. There is a higher-than-average safety rating for this intersection. Probably not a big surprise to anybody who uses it. And it's really meant and was designed for exiting traffic from Route Nine, but it's been misshapen to do dangerously much more than that. However, this particular intersection is even, is further complicated by the fact that South Street acts as a cutover for many Route twenty destinations such as Market Basket. That was why we asked that that be included. It's not a stretch that people from, from the other part of town, both ways, come down South Street to get to Route twenty. We do it. We're neighbors and we do it. As I said, we're not traffic engineers, but luckily, it sounds like MDM has a really good handle on what that's gonna look like and how that should be handled. So that was a very encouraging comments that you made. Thank you. The traffic fatalities are the biggest concern. We've now had two. I don't know, it's not a wish-want, you know, emotional issue. People have died in this intersection. If there's no need, and there's no impact to the business, to move that, that driveway to Route Nine, like Kia has and other dealers in the, in neighborhood. As a matter of fact, all eighteen dealers from South Street to Route four ninety-five, all of them have only Route Nine access. And we will send you the data that proves it all out. The guard rail you guys talked about. One, one other thing for the, for the neighbors, this is our only issue so far. We've not seen anything else that, because we, we, we had some initial questions, which were answered. Great. This is, this is our one and only concern, and that was intentional. We really got together and said, what is critically important enough to even mention or even ask, right? This is a business. They have to, they have to succeed. Public safety concerns were our top problem. So just wanna know, I just want you to know where that comes from. I was asked to read, the neighborhood meeting did not go quite as expected or as hoped. There were times where it got off track. There was times where it got disrespectful. There were times where people weren't heard or listened to. We've been asked to just read the formal communication that we sent to Richard Ricker.
Could I ask you to do me a favor? Would, would you just please send that to us so that we can read it out of leisure? It's, it's, I still have more stuff on the agenda. And we are going to have another meeting, so you'll have another opportunity to, to bring up your other concerns, okay?
I'll wrap up. This is the best part. You're ready? In conclusion. I would say that any Shrewsbury resident in this room that uses South Street, even if infrequently, knows all too well the dangers of this. To be fair to the BACH team, that this is a worthy project. It's complete with a low-impact use of the land, or it's not their fault. In fact, you might even say this is an inherited problem, but an inherited problem is still a problem. The oppositional traffic flows will only serve to exacerbate all the problems, with the current crash data showing seventy-one percent of incidents being during daylight hours, eighty-three percent during clear weather, ninety-one percent during dry. What's gonna happen if it's not a clear, dry day? So those are our big concerns. We would formally ask that the driveway, and it's obviously gonna come up as a topic. Ideally, option one for us would be, move it to Route Nine. It's an already broken intersection. That notwithstanding, we were told originally that this was for emergency use only. So if that is the case, if they are being required by the state or by the town to provide this for emergency vehicle use, let's make it, make it a purpose-built entrance then, and let's make it emergency vehicles only. Lastly, if this right-hand, right, this right in, left, I, I, we don't see that as, as a, as a solution, as a reasonable solution. If you use the intersection, you, you know what I mean. It's just, it's just way too dangerous. So I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
I'm gonna make an assumption that that's gonna be the last public comment. Okay, please come down. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name's Carol Barton. I live at thirty Brentwood Drive. It has nothing to do with traffic. I am the individual that has raised the issue about the thirty-foot encroachment into residential area. I'm a estate planning attorney. I love rules, so that's why it intrigues me. And I understand, and thank you for sharing the town council's opinion, which he says because it's a passive use, it's permissible. But in his opinion, it says, absent a local zoning bylaw specifically to the contrary, isn't the thirty-foot restriction contrary to having a hundred-and-eighty-foot encroachment?
It's an interesting point. I have, I have no background knowledge on this, so...
So we had a follow-up conversation with council today, and the drainage basin is a passive use. It is not a use specifically associated with a car dealership use. And it's council's opinion that that type of passive use would be allowed on any piece of property regardless of the zoning district. So we did speak with the zoning enforcement officer as well, and that is her opinion as well, is that basin would be an allowed use as part of the project, or is not part of the project. So that would be her recommendation to the boards, and we can get that in writing.
Okay, but I'm not questioning the usage. I'm, the town council's opinion, which is here, his says, Massachusetts case law holds that absent a local zoning bylaw specifically to the contrary, isn't the thirty-foot restriction contrary to being more than thirty feet? I'm not questioning the use.
The thirty-foot restriction refers to structures and buildings.
No, no, not, the zoning bylaw here says, where a district boundary line divides any lot of record existing at the time of such line is adopted, any building or use permitted in either district shall be permitted for said lot within a distance not exceeding thirty feet beyond the boundary, period.
Wait, so that's a building or use? The basin is not considered a building or use?
No, but what I'm saying is, your town council says, if there isn't something contrary in the bylaw, you can exceed thirty feet. Isn't the restriction of thirty feet contrary?
We did not get that opinion today.
Okay. Well, no, that's, this is the issue. My opinion's different, so that's...
I'll, I'll answer it this way. It's best from the planning board's side. It sounds like town council and the planning department and the engineering department have had a conversation, and as far as they're concerned, this is an allowed part of the site plan. So I'm just gonna leave it at that, because I, I know you're, you're, you're looking into the, you know, the lawyer world, and that's not my world. It might be Steve's, but...
I just might mention it.
But, no, but it, it sounds like it was a great question that was asked. It looked like it was investigated. We have a direction from town council with the... We have a direction from town council with the opinion that, that it's not detrimental to the site plan, so we're just going to move forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up on that. When we initially presented the plan with the pre-application meeting to town staff, we actually had some of the retaining walls also across the boundary line. We were advised by the building inspector at that time that that was part of the commercial use, and we should move it back over to the commercial district.
Which we did.
Which we did prior to filing the plan. So the parking spaces, the retaining walls, the buildings, the loading area, all these things are commercial uses which are restricted to the commercial area. And if that's where our plan shows. Other sites in town we've designed with stormwater and open space that are connected with the use going across the boundary into another district has never been a question.
Stormwater is a function of the impervious site disturbance, not a function of.
Yeah, one clarifying question for, for the drains. Does that include snowmelt as part of the, your water system? It's all going to go into the water system, and is that part of the, where it lands?
Through the chair, yes, the stormwater system is designed to collect snowmelt.
Yes, so it's included in their calculations for stormwater management. I imagine you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Catherine Luzowski, South Street. So I'm concerned about the environmental impact, and I'm wondering if BACH conducted an environmental impact assessment to determine if there is no significant environmental impact to the area. Specifically, a lifestyle, life cycle assessment of greenhouse gas emissions to determine what impact the facility will have on climate change. So, was that done or?
Mr. Ricker, Mr. Ricker?
I don't believe it.
I, I, it's a great question. I don't know that it's part of the plan.
I don't believe that that was.
Did this trigger a MEPA?
No, it's over 1,000 spaces MEPA, 999 is MEPA still.
Based on the Miami, the impervious, it didn't trigger a MEPA?
It didn't trigger a MEPA because after 900 space, 900, over 1,000.
So I'm saying no.
So I am very concerned about that because BACH admits that there's hazardous chemicals, obviously, in your, you know, working in with automobiles. So, if you pass and other chemicals pose a significant risk for groundwater and soil contamination, and there's a large wetland on South Street. I remember catching frogs there when I was four years old. So, and someone else spoke about the well, et cetera. So, to me, that is a huge red flag and issue that I think needs to be addressed.
Can I, can I just address that? Is on the oils, they all have to have double containments.
Will there be a gas filling station?
There, there, there will be an underground gas tank here at the facility, and you have to meet all the requirements by the fire department to get the fireplace. We have to go to the fire department to get.
How many gallons? Do you know how many gallons?
Uh, I think it's 10,000 gallons. It will be underground, and it will be in a double wall containment. I'll probably put close to 30 tanks in throughout New England. And you have a whole set of rules or regulations you have to follow. You put the tank in, then after you put the tank in the ground, you put a bag around the tank. And if the tank leaks, it has a second containment. And what we do is we put a bag for third, and there's all kinds of alarms. Every day, the, it's monitored, and so someone checks the monitor with the tape. And if it does go off, it goes to alarm, it gets notified. Like if you set your alarm at your house and someone breaks in, you get notified by a calling station. That calling station will let you know immediately that that tank has erupted to the second containment. And the second containment, the alarm will go off, and if you don't get it before that, then it has a third containment. So, and all the oils all have manifest, and they all have, that we're all accountable for.
Sure, well, especially where you are, that's all going to drain. There's an issue and it is a hazard, for sure, so.
Listen, it's now 10:15, right? Again, we're going to have another meeting, okay?
If there's a violation, not just fine to the town, but to the neighborhood as well. Because after all, it affects our lives.
Yes, I understand, so.
Oh, no, we're, we're.
Hold on, excuse me.
So, environmental impact of a zone, climate change.
But that's not in our.
That's not part of the requirement, just so you know. All right.
Whose requirement is it? I'm sorry, Catherine Luzowski, 116 South Street. Who, who should be concerned about the environment?
Who do we bring that up to?
Should we all be concerned about the environment?
Yes, yes.
Climate change?
But that's not in our zone.
I understand what you're saying, but where do we go as?
That's not one of the, that's not one of the, as I stated at the outset, this is an allowed use in this zone. So, we, uh, site plan approval is a creature of our zoning bylaw. And, the operative word is approve. We approve with conditions. Unfortunately, the conditions that you're bringing up aren't ones that we can impose on the applicant. Other people like the fire department or the conservation commission, if they're, uh, within a buffer zone or, or impacting, or there's a wetlands crossing, they deal with those matters. We don't deal with those matters, unfortunately.
Someone on the conservation commission, and they told me to go to the town clerk. So, who's in charge?
We're not going to have an answer for this. I, I can tell you that the answer for us is we don't have the answer. So I would, I would request that you go and contact the town manager's office and get more direction from him. I, I, we can't answer that for you.
Maybe approving the site is a mistake in the first place.
Ma'am, we're not there yet, okay? Listen, we're getting out of order a little bit here, so please.
There, there's, there's rules that we have to follow. We all have to follow. They keep the community together.
With conditions, the condition is not very well defined.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet, okay. With that, I'm going to take this opportunity. I know there may be other questions out there, but as I mentioned, we will have, and this hearing is going to be continued. I ask that you maybe write your question down or just look back at this meeting, and maybe your question was answered because it was kind of lengthy. But the bottom line is we'll have another conversation at our next meeting with more information based on the information that we've been passing back and forth, an updated plan on their next attempt at whatever it is that they're going to try to do here, and we'll discuss it at that point, okay? With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No, not close.
I'm not going to continue the hearing, not close. My apologies.
I move that we continue the public hearing for the site plan for the proposed auto dealership at 701 Boston Turnpike until January 5th, 2023 at 7:00 P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We have 420, hey, hey, Richard? Richard? I see on new business you have here something about, uh, can we, can we push that to next month? The 195?
It's going real fast. Okay. I, I promise you, it's going real fast, because it's just a quick question, and I'm ready to file a modification if you guys say. So we're ready to file it this week, because they want to get going.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to please.
Move outside.
Move outside, be quiet, please.
To give you that couple of letters to the petitions that was submitted to the.
All right, I, I, we still have some more work to do here, so thank you. Thank you for attending. Okay, our next public hearing, it's continued public hearing, uh, it's still a little loud. Thank you. Thank you. What's that?
We've already done our presentation for this one, so.
Yeah. So we can be high level on this one, okay?
We'll be as high-level and quick as I can.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I see Mr. Thomas has returned. Thank you, sir. Okay, our next item of business is a continued public hearing for proposed collision center and retail building site plan approvals. MagRE Holdings 800 Boston Turnpike LLC, location is 420 Boston Turnpike. Please introduce yourselves and tell us where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Richard Ricker, attorney representing the applicant. To my right is John Crandall. He's the government's development manager, vice president of development. Something like that. And Garrett Horstfall is from Kelly Engineering Group. He's our engineer here tonight to address any questions you may have. As you may recall, we did the, the initial presentation here in September. There's been a number of continuances since then. There's some, there were some changes to the plans. If you want us to go through them, that's fine. We went back to the select board relative to the license again because we changed the plan because of the floor decor addition to the plan where we had left that space up in the, that right-hand corner, the eastern, southeastern corner of the site. We've been back to the ZVA. They gave us the final approval as well. And, we have now closed conservation. The stormwater management regulations, we've gone through that with the engineering department. I believe that's all squared away. Garrett, can you confirm that? I think we have seen final comments from Graves Engineering as late as today. And, I'm happy to say that I think that they're, they're all good except for one, which is item number 12, which we would ask you to, if you do seek it to close the hearing, to just put a condition that we put that notation on the plan.
I'm, I'm going to stop you right there. I, I don't think we're in a position to close the hearing only for the simple reason that this literally just got, it was hot and printed when I showed up here today. So I have had an opportunity to read it. We also haven't had an opportunity to do any kind of draft decision, so we don't have anything currently in front of us that would allow us to just close this hearing. But if you want to tell us just briefly some of the things that you did sitework-wise that allowed for those different continuances that you, you needed, I think that would be helpful.
Certainly, again, for the record, Garrett Horstfall with Kelly Engineering Group obviously skipped to the majority of BACH's change economy revised plans. It was primarily to deal with the town stormwater management regulations. We had done extensive soil testing previously, log subsurface proposal, so now we propose Boss versus removal cartridges and all these results, so for 60% of the Boss versus removal, as well as 80% TSS rule of the town stormwater regulations. That is the majority of what happened plan change-wise. We did remove a couple of parking spaces just for utility conflicts. Up at that expanded Oak Tree parking lot, nothing's been expanded from the previous plans that were presented in front of you before. But that was the majority of the changes and for stormwater. Really, the site layout remained the same. And we just incorporated additional floor decor doors and the like. But it was primarily focused on the stormwater, which in the Graves letter, it agrees with the analysis. And we've closed out conservation in coordination with Andy Truman as well. So really, the, the plan changes were the, the stormwater regs that we've now complied with. And, you know, we think the Graves letter, I've reviewed it, it's very minor. And it's all in agreement with what we've done, and there was one outstanding comment added to mention all the details and.
Now we can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, any questions from the board at this time?
No questions from.
The pavement binder. The waiver.
The waiver that we're asking for there.
Yes.
So we did request a waiver width down to, I believe I have the request in here.
One and a half.
Yep, it's down to a binder width of one and a half on standard duty and two inches on heavy duty. It's a standard pavement section that we've used on hundreds of sites throughout the state. This is a private site. This is on a public street. And, we've had no issues with this pavement section ever used that we know of. And, it really is just a, you know, cost saving. I think it's still in compliance with, you know, general site practice.
So, I, I had a quick discussion, Mr. Thomas and I talked about this yesterday. And I think we're going to ask the, the engineering department to just verify that. I'm not a pavement guy. I can't tell you going that is a good thing or a bad thing. So I'd like to get some guidance from the engineering department.
Sure.
Thank you. That's my only question was that.
And there, I do want to note that there was one waiver request withdrawn for the 200-foot Locust Map Site. We did provide that exhibit so that it had been withdrawn. We are still asking for another waiver relative to signage.
So if they've already put in a waiver request, we would have to vote that waiver down, right? You can't just, if they withdraw.
If our decision, we can say it's denied because they've withdrawn it, or in decision, we can note that they've withdrawn it.
Okay, so we only do the decision.
I'm, I'm less concerned about the pavement.
Okay.
Just because it's their site, falls apart.
Yeah, I just, I'd, I'd never seen that before, and I didn't know, like, I'm not a pavement guy.
It's the second time I've seen it, both recently, frankly, and I think, I think it's, it is a cost-saving measure. And it's something that, in another case that I have in, in West Boylston, it was again a cost-saving measure that, and there was quite a bit of detail that they gave relative to how it's just as good and, and it's not going to be a problem. So, I mean, we'll see what engineering says, and we'll need more information, but we're happy to, to provide it. I am remiss by not saying that we do have a representative from floor and decor here as well.
Thank you.
Former owner would be outraged that you tried.
Sorry it's a late meeting for you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? We got, we got the, the champions are up here still. All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the, excuse me, the public hearing on 420 Boston Turnpike. Is this a site plan approval and special permit?
Yes. Yes.
No, just.
No, just site plan.
Site plan approval, 420 Boston Turnpike until January 5th, 2023 at 7:00 P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next item of business, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, please introduce yourself again, John.
Yes, John Gruney or Jam Gurney Associates. I'm here with.
Larry Rosenberg. I'm a managing member of Service Department of Development Partners, the applicant.
Okay, so where we stand is, part of the conservation commission request was that we did a full, do we do a full flood study on the property. That included doing a survey of in excess of 100 acres. We had to get all of the drainage outfalls and plans from every subdivision and site around our property, including 290, which went all the way up to like 140, the intersection of 140 and 290. So it was a pretty extensive undertaking. We did complete that. We submitted that to the conservation commission along with updated site plans, which were submitted to your, your board as well. They were submitted to Graves Engineering as well. We're waiting on comments back from both conservation and Graves Engineering. So, the result of the flood study was it had really no impact on the site. There were some areas, the flood elevation ranges from about elevation 451 to 453 as you go from south to north, south is the lower portion of the site. There was some offgrading particularly at the, the south end of the site, the southeast part of the site, which is just some offgrading for the, the detention basin. So there was some removal of flood storage in this southern area in particular. And what we did was in other upland areas that were adjacent to it, in the center portion of the site, and in this area, we provided at, at one-foot intervals, like you're supposed to do, provide replication and flood storage. So, we actually incorporated both wetland replication and flood storage in some of the same areas so that we reduce the amount of tree clearing. We're not going to start clear-cutting, you know, other areas. So we were able to kind of double-dip on that, which was good. As you know, this project started off with 66 total units, which were both in this central south portion of the site as well as this central east portion of the site. As part of our conversations with both the board and conservation, we are removed any development. There were 12 units on this section of the site, which now this will be permanent open space, Gene Button Hagan. Gene Button Hagan, um, this is like the first name. He's not here. I, I think he's getting happier and happier. Um, so there's no development anywhere near him. Um, everything is clustered, as said, in the center portion of the site. So, originally we went from sixty-six units. We removed, uh, units here, and then we were down to sixty units. And, uh, Jay, I, I, I hear your voice in my sleep all the time. Too dense, too dense, too dense. So, uh, we proactively, um, have reduced the unit count down to fifty-three. So, that's an additional seven units. That's a total of twenty percent reduction, uh, in the total units on the site. And in doing so too, just to, um, I, I know the big buzzword over the past number of years has been massing, massing, massing. We have, uh, thirteen single units spread out. So, you don't have a larger duplex building. We've separated them out so that you have more green space between the units and, and spread out the, the size of the building. So, it's a total of, um, twenty, twenty duplexes and thirteen singles. Um, we still are providing a clubhouse, which is located in this area. Um, we did, um, submit a septic design plan. Uh, we are proposing a septic in this area. That was all sands and gravels. Um, and also when we reduced the number of units, we also kind of shrunk. We, we pulled away some of the grading in this area and pulled away some of the grading in this area, which also helped, uh, reduce cuts and fills, which is a benefit for both us and for, you know, trucking in and out of the site during construction. So, it's, it's better balance. So, um, it's a benefit to the neighborhood so they don't have trucks pulling in and pulling out during, during, you know, the, the construction portion of the, of the project. Um, so really that's just an overview. I know that we, the, the rule is you don't close until conservation closes. Our goal is, uh, we submitted everything to conservation before their last meeting. So, um, I'm going to work with the engineering department to try to make sure that we address all of their comments before their next meeting. Um, and at the same time, um, I believe Graves should have enough time to review this before January's meeting. So, um, we're really working hard to address everybody's concerns. Um, I, I know density is always an issue with, with, uh, your board. And that's why we're proactively trying to work to make sure, you know, and at the end of the day, it still has to be, um, an economically feasible project. You know, we can't knock so many units down that it's just doesn't work. It has to be feasible. Um, we, we tightened our belts. Um, I had Larry in my ear a couple of times because we had dropped him down the units, but I said, we need to, we need to be able to make this work. Um, we ran the numbers to make sure it's viable. Um, we weren't able to add a little bit of extra value because we, singles do have a little bit more value as opposed to, uh, you know, duplex styles. They, they are a little bit more, um, valuable and sought after. We do anticipate that this is going to be a, a higher-end project, um, probably in keeping with, uh, Adams Farm, Wyman Farm. Um, high-end units that will, um, really almost, and again, it's over fifty-five, nothing but a tax benefit to the town. No school kids, no, uh, roads to plow, no, um, infrastructure for the town to maintain. So, it, it's really, uh, I, we believe, again, a great project. Um, nothing but a benefit to the town with no downside in terms of, of, uh, you know, educating school kids or, or having long-term maintenance for, for the town itself. So, that's really the long and short of it. Um, we know that we, we're, we're waiting on some reviews and some final, uh, feedback from, from both the conservation commission and Graves. But, um, without any questions besides saying.
John, the only thing I'd like to add is that at last con con, the only questions that came up at all were a couple of interpretive questions about the flood study. And that everything else with them seems to be, again, I don't want to speak for them, but no other questions came up from the commission other than a clarifying thing. And by the way, the floodplain study is about a two-inch document.
It's a small phone book.
So, the engineering department has, you know, hasn't finished going through it, but we're anticipating or very hopeful that, you know, we'll, we'll close the meeting next time.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions from the board, Mr. Row?
No questions from my side.
Mr. Jerry?
I have no.
No questions tonight?
Well, the only thing I, it's been, because you had several continuances for this meeting, the only question I have, and you may already have the, gotten a response of the answers, the slope analysis. I, because I'm going to reiterate my concern with the eight-hundred-foot, uh, wall.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you put a shelf in there, but do you know, did, did you know, response, and it's, you may have already supplied it. I don't recall.
We did make, uh, we made that modification to the slopes, um, a couple of iterations ago. I, we have to close the loop on that.
I would appreciate if we can get some background information on that.
Well, I, I believe, and again, it was, it was a little while ago, but it was making sure that we s- separate the slope and have, I think it was a minimum of like an eight-foot wide plateau midway down. So, and I think we went with a ten-foot. So, I, I think that should address it, but again, we need to close.
If you can just maybe, in this timeframe between now and our next meeting, if you could just follow up with that and ensure that we get the information we're looking for.
Right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Nope, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard?
She already told me she didn't want to talk.
I already promised him I wouldn't say anything.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing for the site plan approval and special permit for senior housing and special permit for this exclusionary, uh, housing fee low for the, uh, Cypress Avenue, uh, or one Greenbrier Drive, uh, over fifty-five project.
Do I have a second?
Two, January fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, that takes care of all of our hearings. Our next item of business is to discuss and vote on the planning board calendar. Um, it's pretty straightforward. I didn't see anything that jumped out to me. Um, it looks like July third will be prior to the holiday weekend. So, I don't know if anybody's going to have any specific issues with that.
July sixth?
Uh, July thirty.
That's the, that's the.
Oh, finally deadline. All right. My, I'm looking at the wrong note. See, it's a late night. So, okay, so July sixth after the holiday. Um, beyond that, does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the, okay? So, uh.
I move that we adopt the regular meeting schedule is set forth on this, uh, piece of paper here today.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and our last item of business is a new item of business for a request for consideration, I think is how I'm reading it. Mr. Vodilakis would be recusing himself.
But I'm not getting out.
But he's not getting out. So, Mr. Rick.
It's a question of the minimus or not. Um, and, uh, one ninety-five, uh, Main Street, as you know, we went through the, um, appeal process and, and it was a lengthy and arduous, um, um, ordeal for our client, Cornerstone. And we, we want to, uh, they frankly want to get moving. Um, we don't want to subject ourselves to a potential for another appeal. I would, um, suggest to you that our request, I suggested to, to planning that it should be a de minimis request uh, because what we did, uh, in settling the case with the neighbors is we increased the setback, uh, on the eastern side of, of the property. Uh, and we decreased the size of, the overall size of the building. Uh, what, the only thing that was a, was, um, um, the change that may, I mean, we went a little bit closer to the street on the retail side, but not within the setback. I mean, it, it wasn't even near the setback. So, we, we decreased the building and we increased the setback and we settled the case. And, um, if ever there's a de minimis thing, I mean, I, I, I would think that that's it. I, I mean, that's my feeling. I talked to town council. He suggested that he would, uh, suggested, uh, the plan is that they at least let me, um, argue my case to the planning board. So.
With that being said, do you have anything else to add?
I, I don't, John. Did I, did I state it adequately?
Basically, this, this came about from the legal action from the appeal. And the legal action settled concerns for the abutters, satisfies the appellant.
Yep.
And, uh, and the question for us is do we, would we consider, so this is not a formal request for a de minimis change. I'm just asking if you need to file, uh, site plan modification or a de minimis.
Which is five hundred dollar filing fee and a thousand dollar peer review, and what do we need another peer review for?
Right, okay. So, with that being said, any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Row?
Um, I don't have question per se, but I mean, is there any legal opinion we need to get from our town council? Or has he already kind of looked at this kind of request? You know, I don't know.
He said it was up to you. I, I, I spoke with him. Um, Louise, you can correct me or, or add in here whatever you want. But the bottom line is, um, the, the reasoning of the, the plan is, was that this decrease of a building and increase of a setback is not one of the ten specific items that are listed in the, in the regulations. But I will note to you that the, it says including but not limited to the following. And, and, you know, that's why I, and town council, you know, in discussions, you say, yeah, okay, you know, you should just argue with the planning board. It's their decision. So.
But the as-built will, will have the changes.
Yes.
If, if.
Yeah, and the, the curb cuts are the same. The parking configuration for the most part is the same, just the building is small and shifted a little bit. But the drainage is the same, you know, if anything, it's, it's less, obviously less impact because now the neighbor's happy. So.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, Mr. Jerry?
And you're essentially making the building deeper and narrower to accommodate it?
Yes.
But aesthetically, it'll look more or less the same.
Pretty much the same. I- if, you know, if you weren't steering up the plan and you looked, they'd say, yeah, it's the same.
And, and the building's shorter too. It's, it's, it's actually, uh.
Lower height.
Yeah, uh, lower in height. Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
So, I guess the question that you ask is should he apply for a de minimis change or should he go for site plan modification?
And if you want me to do a site plan modification, would you waive the peer review?
What do you think?
I, you know, I think given the fact that it's increasing the controversial setback and they're within all of the other ones, I guess I would be leaning towards de minimis.
Yeah. Mr. Row?
I would lean towards that too.
God, it, um.
I would add the fact that council referred to us. It doesn't sound like he has a very strong opinion on it.
Yeah, Steve, I mean, the only thing is you're moving it quite a bit.
I recuse myself.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I would, uh, one thing I would say.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I understand it's better. I totally understand it's better. It's just the.
He supports the de minimis. Get a letter from Howard saying that he supports the de minimis change. That's, that would, that would accompany your, what you're looking for. That's what I would do if I were you and the board.
You know how, how it works and that, that could be a monumental task.
Write it for him.
Getting it.
Now I'm recusing.
What are you, Steve, you okay with the minimis, Steve?
Uh, if my initial, my initial thought honestly was it was a significant shift. So, I was thinking site plan approval.
I see.
It sounds to me like you'd be okay with site plan approval if we could waive the peer review.
And I'll just hope that there's no appeal.
That's what's.
Yeah.
You know, you get somebody out of left field.
I, I think, I can be convinced that a de minimis does, it does fall into de minimis only for the simple reason that this is the result of a litigation that satisfies the abutters. It's not just a random, you wanted to do a shift and just follow.
If for no other reason than making people happy.
So.
Can you just clarify again, councils, town council's opinion on this was defer to us?
Can you just ask him to send us something that he, he, he said it was really up to the board's decision? And if they find out otherwise, you can let Richard know and he can fly for a site plan approval, a site plan modification. Okay, that'd be good. Okay.
Do you want me to call?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry to keep you late. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And with that, I'll go on record as saying this is the longest meeting I can recall in all the years I've been here. Uh, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Steve likes to do that one.
I move that we conclude the Z B A's public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.